Go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I apologize just for my clarity standpoint for the record on the minutes. I did suggest a non-substantive word revision just for clarity on a condition for, and Ali already has this in her notes, but for the Klump case, SD 21.33, condition number 11, the condition as stated said raised island be reviewed, and my only suggestion just for clarity was to add the word traffic. So we knew, I mean, I think it was obvious, but just to make sure it was clear. And so the revised would be raised traffic island to be reviewed, just adding the word traffic. That was my only suggested revision for clarity.
Okay.
So I make a motion to make that amendment in the minutes to raise traffic island. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes accepted. So the first new business, do you want to present the deadlines or do we just need to?
In relation to approve as submitted, we plan, or if we have alternatives?
Okay, does anyone, does anyone have any issues with the deadlines for next year as submitted? All right, we have-
I move that we approve the agenda or the commission deadlines as submitted.
Second.
For 2022.
Okay, I was waiting for Art to, Art, are you okay with the planning commission deadlines?
Oh, yes ma'am, I'm motion sir.
All right, all in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Would you like to speak to the comprehensive plan?
Yes, and with considering we have a lot to accomplish, I will just, this is our monthly plug for the comprehensive plan. We are having public engagement meetings currently. I believe we've had six so far and have a few more on the schedule. And just want to plug, planfairhope.com is our website. So all schedules, surveys, everything that we have available at the moment is there and will be continued to be updated.
Great. So first off, we've had a, since it appears that a lot of people are here tonight to, for item number H, the informal review, we have been asked to move that to the beginning of the agenda. So we're going to start with item H, which is item IR 2101, and it's the request by favor engineering on behalf of the owner for an informal review of the Monarch Hotel, a 39-unit project. It's on, located on northeast corner of Bayview and Fairhope Avenue and approximately .6 acres. And just to, Hunter will walk through just the process that projects like this go through, but just to note that this, this is not actually being proposed at this point. This is an informal review where people have a concept, they bring it in front of the planning commission for feedback. But it's not yet, public hearing, not yet fully formed.
Thank you, Chairman. And that, that in of itself is, without a public hearing, I know we just had some conversations about people speaking against it. So even what we've reviewed at staff, this is going to change. But during that review, we received a site plan review, which would have came to the planning commission and then ultimately to the council for approval or denial. During that review, there were things that we typically do in our review process where we said, well, this doesn't work as proposed, but there were a couple of other things that came up that we couldn't answer. So the applicant agreed to put this on the agenda for an informal review to ask the planning commission those questions. So I'm going to kind of go through this. Then the application was for a 39-unit hotel at the subject property. For reference, the zoning map on the left is the, currently three lots, there are two houses on two lots, there's one house built across two lots at the corner of Bayview and Fairhope Avenue, and a little further east on Fairhope Avenue is a second house on the third lot. The aerial on the right shows the property and the existing buildings. This is zone B3B, and within the zoning ordinance, and has been this way for quite some time, B3B allows a hotel, so by right. So to explain by right, that's the black circle on our, in our zoning code, that that doesn't, that use doesn't have to be approved. So the white circle there, those usually have to be approved by board of adjustment before they can move forward. So a hotel use on the site is not what's in question. I do want to mention here, because we've looked at different options in B3B, a bed and breakfast actually is not allowed. It's allowed in B3A. I have had some questions about that, and it may be something we want to consider revising the zoning ordinance to allow that. Even in the CBD, a hotel must get approval for the board of adjustment. So for, as revisions, that's just a comment from your planning director to the planning commission.
Well, yeah.
Sure.
Especially since single-family residences are allowed, and typically that's what bed and breakfast come out of, it seems like a glitch.
Right. So the site plan that was given, and I want to just, just out front, this cannot be built as presented. So there's a couple of questions we're getting to, but the site plan, as you see, was what was submitted. There's a couple of issues with this, there's some heritage trees, it is a commercial project, so those are protected. Those would have to be reviewed and accommodated for. There's also on Fairhope Avenue, a 20-foot landscape buffer that's required on certain streets within the city of Fairhope. That has not been provided for. Those were not at question. We know that. We know that's going to change this site plan somewhat. The kind of architectural drawings that were shown, we did not get into, all right, can we cut out the peanut gallery, please? That is not appropriate, and please, it's hard for me to hear and concentrate. So the images shown were, that were submitted this way, and two questions arose that staff can't answer, and those dealt with off-site parking credits and replat procedure. According to the applicant, their, the parking requirements, 40 parking spaces are required for the proposed 39-unit hotel. The proposed plan provides for 20 on-site parking spaces and 10 bicycle spaces, which the planning commission knows, for each five bicycle spots provided, the planning commission and/or city council may allow that to be credited for one parking space. The applicant provided a map, which I'll flip to, that stating there are 44 on-street parking, existing on-street parking spaces within 300 feet of the subject property, and would like to attribute 50% of that number, which our zoning coordinates, zoning ordinance allows, not mandates, to accommodate for 22 of those parking spaces. This is a hand-drawn map of the on-street parking submitted by the applicant. I want to be clear-
Go back, go back, go back.
Yes, sir.
Hold it right there for a minute. Okay?
Okay. I want to be clear on what the language says, because one word can make a big difference. The article in question that allows for this says parking credits may be given for on-street parking and bicycle parking. And depending on what kind of application that is, whether it's site plan review, PUD, you know, MOP, that's either planning commission deciding that or city council. Who's the ultimate decision maker? This project as submitted would require a site plan review, as we've currently seen, and an MOP. So the planning commission would be a deciding factor on one of those, the city council will be on another. As staff looked at this, there's no way we would recommend, and I think Richard Johnson, our public works director, agreed as well, we would recommend allowing the on-street parking. This is parking at, near our parks, at the top of the bluff, it is there, this is not the CBD. We would not recommend a parking allowed like this for a hotel or any other use. That would need to be maintained on-site. So one of those questions, that, as you can imagine, before they go back to the drawing board, did like to kind of have some feedback on that question. So that's one reason we're here. And then with a replat, the subdivision regulations allow an administrative replat. And what that means is the planning director can approve a, most commonly that is a lot line movement. So a replat where no new lots are created. And we actually do that on a frequent basis, when there's two historic lots and a building over those two lots, it's common to have a replat if they're coming in or renovate or doing some additions, things like that. We don't allow building over lot lines now, so that is a very common procedure. And I'm going to go back to those one, sometimes those one words mean something. This says it may. It doesn't say I shall. And there is, but we received this replat request to combine three lots into one. I've highlighted here, this is just a blow-up on the left, but the original plat of this area from 1911 shows three lots. There are, and some of my logic is, well, those, that dictates the scale of buildings in those three lots. And while they certainly could be combined, that being a unilateral decision from the planning director is, is something that I am not comfortable making. So, you know, I guess I don't really know the answer to this one. I don't know what to do and just need some feedback here. Because while that's allowable for a hotel, and you look at our zoning map, it's smaller lots. It's not combined into a bigger area. In my 16 years of experience, I've never had to really answer that question, so I'm here in front of you asking for some feedback, whether it's for the applicant or for myself. You know, as procedurally, if this required an MOP, they can ask for that at that time from the planning commission. But they kind of need to know that answer before they go to the drawing board designing. So that's what I have, and, you know, we can provide some feedback for the project.
Before we jump in, because I'm sure people have a lot of feedback, I just think it would be helpful, I'm seeing, if a lot of people showed up with this in mind, to hear this, could you explain to them at which, at what time, and then, and what would be the best way for members of the public to give feedback after they listen to this if they want to, what would be appropriate? Because I can imagine sitting here and listening to something if you came here.
Sure.
You might want an outlet.
So leaving this meeting, I imagine the applicant will have to go back to the drawing board in some shape or form, size, shape or form. The likely requirements would be a site plan review and an MOP, multiple occupancy project pursuant to our subdivision regulations. There's a chance they can design something that doesn't trigger site plan review. Site plan review is not a public hearing, but there would be an opportunity to speak at the city council about an agenda item. So there is that opportunity if it does go to the site plan review. A site plan review would come to the planning commission, the planning commission would make a recommendation to the city council. Unlike zoning changes, there's not a public hearing and final adoption, so that, those typically are on the agenda once unless held over by the city council. The MOP is very similar to a subdivision request. So what we would do there is advertise in the paper and mail adjacent property owners when that application is set to be on an agenda. So adjacent property owners would get notification, and we would also do our normal procedures. There'd be a sign, there would be a posting on a website, you know, we would put ads in the paper. And then that would be a public hearing. So to speak on that, that case and to explain kind of the two and why there's two cases, the site plan is more about the aesthetics, and I'm going to, that's maybe, you know, what it looks like. The MOP is a little bit more technical, you know, how you're getting utilities, how you're getting-
Multi-occupancy review.
Yes. Yes. Similar to the, the same procedures, even though it didn't get built, the same procedures we did for both of those, for the Big T Hotel at the corner of Fairhope Avenue and section. So this is very similar procedures, and that would be the process. So in an informal review, there's not even, and you'll notice in your packets, there was nothing there. It's, it's not even required to, somebody can show up at this meeting and ask to be put on the agenda for a formal meeting, you know, so-
Sure.
That's, that's, that's the procedures.
Okay.
Any feedback on the two questions raised? I figured Art might have an opinion.
Go ahead, go ahead, so.
Sure. I, I mean, I think, looking at what, what we all just kind of looked at very quickly, and even before we saw it, just, just doing some rough numbers with the size of that lot and the number of units, I, I struggle to see how 42, 30, you know, 41 parking spaces could be accommodated in a way that meets the landscape ordinance, meets low-impact development requirements for parking lots, meets landscape buffers, or even if the idea was to tuck them under the building, then gets the units in under the height ordinance. So I feel like the combination of our landscape ordinance, our, our parking requirements, and the height restrictions, if you meet all of those things, I don't think that number of units will be possible. And so I would just encourage the applicant to really study the tree ordinance and the landscaping requirements and the low, you know, the requirements of parking and buffering of parking, and, and then would also, that was pretty quick, but would just ask even for the value of their investment to look at the surrounding neighborhood and the view. I think what we just saw that was facing the water, there were like two wind, it was, it was ignoring the million-dollar view. So I feel like the community would probably be more, more, I mean, I'm stepping away from zoning while saying that, but I'm, but just as an aside, I think being a little bit more site-responsive and responsive to the, the architecture around there and the view around there would benefit the project and maybe the community's reception to the project.
All right. My turn. First off, there's, there's been a, there still remains a big issue with, with required parking at the county level with the county ordinances. That is really beginning to be a major problem. And in terms of Fairhope, it's not like we are saddled with a massive amount of parking anyway. I understand what it is that they, they want to do. Personally, I wouldn't have a problem with the moving lot lines, but in terms of occupying 20 to 25 on-street parking places to accommodate this development, no. It, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. This is a, to me, it's a critical area in terms of the community, mostly because it's right at the park, it's right over the hill from the, from the, from the pier, and a lot of the, the natural area that we've got on the bayfront. And to think that you're going to, you're going to have a situation where 22 to 25 of these on-stri, on, on-street parking places would be occupied-
Forty-four.
Forty-four on-street?
They only get credit if-
That's right, they only get credit for half of them. You know, 44 spaces, really? No. Well, anyway, that's, that's my feeling about it. In terms of the, I agree with, I do agree with Rebecca about the, you know, about the aesthetics, and I understand the lot configuration, there's nothing they can do about that, but golly darn, it seemed to me like if you were going to put something of that magnitude in there, you'd make it real attractive and, and at least allow for a view that somebody would, would really enjoy if they came to Fairhope to stay in hotel.
Yeah.
Anyway, I know it's acceptable, I mean, this is a, this is acceptable in, in this district, but the parking is a big issue to me, and in terms of lot line, that's, that's a no-brainer.
So let me give you a little detail on that one. We did talk about what, what do the setbacks become? Because as the lots are laid out, you have two lots with a frontage on Bayview, and then one lot with a frontage on Fairhope Avenue. By combining, you bring everything with a frontage onto Bayview. And there's some historic setbacks there, so keeping the 20-foot, the purple line there is a 20-foot side setbacks, and B3B is 20 feet on the front and rear. So that would further limit the principal building area.
Wait, 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 say that again. Why is the frontage all on Bayview?
Because-
If you combine the three lots?
Just it's a short side.
Our zoning ordinance, when you have a lot, the short side of the lot-
Well, okay.
Is the frontage.
That, I, I-
Four setbacks, four definitions of, how you cite a building and where the front and rear is.
Well, that's what my, my feeling is, I mean-
But where you plot setbacks is-
Okay.
But that's something, I had that question too, is, is, well, my question going into this was, are we required to allow replat if it has a significant impact in the changing and of setbacks on neighboring properties? And this seems like it would have a pretty significant impact on neighboring homes with the, as, as they turn and the setbacks on that smaller lot change.
It just seems, it just seems that, that would be a limit, a limiting factor that doesn't need to be a limiting factor to me. I mean, if they wanted to front, if they wanted to face the building out on Fairhope Avenue, I mean, the thought that you're going to require a massive setback on Bayview with frontage on, on Fairhope Avenue, anyways, just maybe something that we can thread a needle with. But parking's an issue, big time.
Okay. Any other agreement, disagreement?
I agree with the parking. In order to make the project work, you have to, the city has to supply a substantial resource to them.
Yeah, and if you, and I know council did, we had a work session where, when some of the parking issues downtown, we kind of brought that into play, there's, there's the services that the city provides, and it's, parking always kind of goes, gets outside of that. You know, people think about parks and all the maintenance and all those. Public parking spaces are a significant expense, both in the land, the maintenance, and we don't have many anymore around that area to, to offer. We can't create new ones, so.
You know what we have developed as a society, don't you? It's just so obvious here in Fairhope, it was in Mobile when I had my office over there, is that we think that we have an inalienable right to park at the front door of every facility we would like to visit.
Yeah.
And we're going to drive three doors down to be able to park in front of them, and it just doesn't work that way.
Yeah. Well, and when we're asked to consider that trade-off, like to grant somebody off-street parking, if it were an office where sometimes visitor comes in, sometimes they don't, sometimes there's two people there, sometimes there's 10, that would be one thing, but a hotel, people take their car to the hotel. Those, those spaces, if the hotel's full, the spaces are full.
Yeah.
You know what the big, you know what the big issue is though, right? It's the precedent.
Yeah.
And then that's, that's where we really get in a jam.
Yeah.
Downtown and, and anywhere in the outlying area.
Yeah, we would like to, I, you know, I think Fairhope would like to preserve some of the historic value and the culture that we've presented around here over the years, and, and this is not it. I would suggest for those people, I would, I would, yeah, I would suggest for those people to go back to the drawing board and think, we will work with them, but I don't think this is presentable as it is right now. The parking is an issue. Like Rebecca said, that if they tuck the parking, then you're talking about the height. So, you know, the architect design, you know, we don't do enough of that around here. He should look at the surroundings, he or she should look at the surroundings and see what it looks like that fits the culture of this particular environment, and then come back, in my opinion.
And I did, over the, you know, I have, once this got on the agenda, people have been talking about it, and I've heard some questions just about a hotel, and can you have a hotel? And I, there are historic hotels, you know, up and down Fairhope Avenue and Magnolia.
Yes.
So I don't think it's a question about hotel, I think it's, it's the scale.
That's exactly right.
And, and the zoning and the landscaping.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you know, I do want to mention, because there was a lot of folks that did want to speak about this, and I want to, you know, kind of said, no, we don't have that, it's not a public hearing, but I want to understand, I want them to understand why. This, we know this as presented, you can come up and say, it's not, we kind of think collectively just said the same thing, and I think there will have to be a revised revision, if it comes through. You know, it, who knows what the, the future will hold, but there certainly not, doesn't seem like there's the appetite to approve as presented. And I, I don't know if the applicant has any questions, but I do believe he gets an opportunity if, if he does. So he is here, the engineer representing the applicant, so I-
Would the engineer or the applicant like to speak?
I don't have much voice left, so bear with me. I heard everything you said, and that's fine, I know it is what it is. The, as Hunter pointed out, the site plan that you saw is not the final configuration. Based on what y'all said, and obviously we're going to be doing some major redesign, but just so I'm clear, y'all want, and I want to hear from the horse's mouth, you want 100% of the parking to be held on-site? In other words, there's no percentage of the on-street parking we can take, or is there?
I think we'd like to see 100% on-site, but I don't want to speak for everyone else.
No, I agree.
Yes. You'd like to see what?
100% of the parking on their site for a hotel.
Kind of what I was hearing from you, I wanted to hear it, all right.
Thank you. So if, if anyone was just here for that item, feel free to, feel free to stay if you'd like, but also feel free to leave if you'd rather go home. Yeah.
You right? I don't know, I've been beaten. I've been beaten, I don't know. Nobody's listening, but-
The past administration's, the past administration's, the past administration's-
Okay.
We got an opportunity, there's been a lot of dialogue about the comprehensive plan, with the conference, and there's a lot about that that I just, it's a train, looking for a place to happen, but the else we need to do is, it is, I mean, there ain't nothing. That's right. Somebody needs, whoever's in charge, you can go to the council and say-
Okay.
You're right, okay. Oh, yeah, I need another high-paying extracurricular act, I need another high-paying extracurricular activity. Okay.
Almost. Okay. So we can get back to it with item A, ZC 2112, the public hearing to consider the request of Percy Dale to rezone property from R1 low-density single-family to HTD highway transition district.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a simple rezoning case, there's no site plan involved. As, as the planning commission knows, and I'll just say for public, we, well over 20 years, been figuring out what to do with residential zoning on Greeno Road. There's residentially zoned projects, and they've been denied for commercial uses, B, standard B2, we've looked at overlay districts, there's been many things, and, and within the last year, we've adopted a zoning amendment that is called the Highway Transitional District. Those allow for soft commercial uses, like business offices, and this is a straight rezoning request. And what we kind of logically applied there was, with the village concept of our comprehensive plan, the heavier commercial goes at no, commercial or village nodes, and what to do with the spaces in between. So this is, it's just south of Carter Lane, it is zoned R1 within the city, and the applicant has requested highway transitional district zoning, looking at what's around, there's unzoned Baldwin County surrounding one other additional R1, we've got anything from R3 mobile home to PUDs across Greeno. So we, we feel that this is- So we've, we feel that this is, this will be the second rezoning request to Highway Transitional District and we feel like it's appropriate in its use and request and recommend approval. Just for the record, this would be a recommendation from the, the planning commission to the city council, not a final decision.
Okay.
Have any questions? I'm here to answer.
Do we, is, is the owner here to?
I don't believe we have anyone from the, the applicant is not here.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Hunter? Let's open the public hearing then. Does anyone from, hear from the public who would wish to speak on this item? Okay, we can close the public hearing then.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Chairman, chairperson?
I liked madam last time.
Chairwoman? Case.
Beeford used to call me madam.
ZC twenty-one twelve, nineteen-three twenty-seven Greeno, Greeno Road. I move that we recommend to the city council approval, rezoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Recommendation passes. All right, so then item ZC twenty-one fifteen, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant David Deal acting on behalf of the owner Burgess Thomason to amend existing P U D for Montrose Preserve.
And this is an existing P U D. For some of the planning commissioners, we're here through that. This application was originally received in two thousand and fifteen and the P U D passed city council in two thousand and seventeen. That's a long, that's two years. There was a lot of public meetings and residences and city council and planning commissioner at the time that the proposed development, or I'm sorry, the currently approved development accommodated many concerns. That was seventy-seven total lots. And just for reference, we always go through this, on the, the left is the zoning map showing where the, the P U D is located, on the right is the aerial. And this is the existing site plan with the, with the approved P U D. You know, there was a, looking through minutes, you know, what this looked like both from ninety-eight, how it addressed the, the historic areas of Montrose, the cemetery, the existing roads, the, the other large lots were all points of, of concern. And unlike many of the things we do where connectivity is an issue, it was, it was pointed out in that P U D that this is an exception. This is where that, that is not, you know, and, and which happens and allows that flexibility in design and the tool of a planned unit development allows that without a precedent. So the applicant has submitted a revised amendment that is eighteen lots as opposed to the seventy-seven approved. And for commissioners, that P U D did not have an expression, expiration date. So what are amendments now? We do allow P U Ds for two years and if not acted upon, they do expire, expire and revert to R A. The revised plan, eighteen lots, larger lots, all residential with a base zoning of R one. There's a few exceptions, thirty-five in lieu of a thirty-foot height limit. There's some fencing requirements that is specific to the P U D. But eight, otherwise eighteen acres on fifty-three point nine-four acres with a net density of thirty-three units per acre? Point three-three units per acre. I'm sorry. The, the. Kind of ran through those. Critical, I think, to the comments and, and what was ultimately approved was connection to the existing roads. So I'm going to go back here just for a quick moment. It's easier to see there on the image to the right. There are historic right-ofways within this project. They're unopened. You know, so they're, they're trees. They're not, haven't been graded. They're, you know, it, it's natural, if you will. And when this P U D was adopted, we have an overlay on top of those historic. So this is what's approved. And, and critical to that was not connecting to the existing narrow lanes with, you know, sixty-foot right-ofways that would require removal of trees and, you know, major grading. So as this approved plan shows, there's quite a few buffers between those roads. I, I believe it's fair to say the applicant and I sat down, been talking about it for a year and going back and forth. And what, what is proposed here is accommodates a lot of those concerns. Not every detail is finalized. There's some, you know, how, how do you get to the, the, the final result is not finalized. So what we're, what I'm proposing here is a con- concept that has contingencies. So if they can't do that, it reverts to the approved P U D. And what those concepts are is a, I, I don't even want to say the word private because there's few mechanisms that, that they can accommodate this. But connecting to and accessing the eighteen lots as proposed without opening up access to the existing roads other than lots one through three here at the top of the screen using the third street right-ofway. The, just to kind of talk about a couple of those options, what we discussed at one, initially and what you see on the plan is actually a vacation of those right-ofways. The residents in this area would be, obviously have a, a opportunity to gain half of that right-ofway. And the applicant would have the other half where they can put an eighteen-foot paved road. They can work with the existing road if necessary, but we, it kind of gets us out of the way. I can't give that answer right now. Neither can the city because that is a county right-ofway right now. So that would be something that if, if done, that, that would have to process. Alternatively, that could be a private road within a public right-ofway. That would be, have to have agreements, hold harmlessness, all of those things, details that we need to, would need to see. And if that can't be accommodated, moving that drive inside lot lines would be in substantial conformance of, of the plan as shown. So there are alternates to get there that we just don't know right now on what that would be. So as you'll see with the conditions, and I'm sorry, Art, I know you want to keep conditions limited, but, you know, there, there's quite a few on this one. And that's so we make sure that, that the plan is submitted, it actually happens. I'll touch base on utilities real briefly. This is a P U D, so that level of detail is typically not provided. You know, construction, there are those preliminary plats is where we, we would look at those things. So water is currently serviced by Fairhope Utilities, I'm sorry, sewer is currently serviced by Fairhope Utilities. Water, Daphne, Power, Riviera and A T and T for communications. Any, the adequacy of those and the, the layout of those would have to be resolved before preliminary plat application. The green space, the total acreage of green space provided in this plan versus the, the approved plan, the total acreages is reduced. The percentage is still much greater than our required minimum of ten percent. But in effect, what you're seeing is the lots have increased in size and they're still single-family residential. So the, the end result, I believe, provides more green space. It's just not all combined in the common areas. The, on the north side of lots one, and I'm going to flip back for you. One of the concerns was required a buffer, and these are visual buffers, so not just a, a physical or, or platted buffer. A buffer adjacent to the cemetery. And we, the applicant has agreed to include that during our reviews. We actually missed this one. I wish it was highlighted, but we missed the forty-foot buffer on Greeno. That, that one, I believe is, and we just didn't have a chance to speak with the applicant about that. But as writing, writing the staff reports at the last minute, we do feel that's important. So we recommend requiring that as a condition of approval of all lots that are adjacent to the highway. Because lots one through three are historic lots of record, there's this kind of strange, what, what's the next step if approved? And in a traditional development, it would be a preliminary plat. That's when the access is accommodated for. That's when utilities, that's when a lot of those technical merits, wetlands are defined, floodways, all of those things are defined. Lots one through nine, as proposed, exist. They're lots of record. There's a P U D sitting on top of it that prevents them from being used as historically platted. And then lots ten through eighteen would have to get replatted through a normal procedure. So what staff is recommending is all eighteen lots come in for preliminary plat that will include the street access, your, all, all of the things listed here that we typically review in a preliminary plat. I'm going to go through these one by one. I typically don't read them all, but I'm going to go through the recommendations because there's a few of them and, and hopefully explain, explain why this is there. So the first step, as I just said, a preliminary plat should be required that includes the entire acreage. At minimum, the preliminary plat shall provide street access to each of the eighteen lots and be in substantial conformance with the street layout as proposed on the master site plan. The preliminary plat shall be approved by the Fairhope Planning Commission prior to issuance of any building permits for any property located within the P U D. That last step there is important to us because if one permit for any of the eighteen lots were to happen, it could prevent the ability to revert back to the P U D as, as approved today. So what we're trying to do is get out of the way so they can figure out the access. But we don't want to be caught in the middle of, of two plans and not have a solution for that. Condition number two, street access to every lot shall be determined and approved by the authority having jurisdiction prior to submitting for preliminary plats or building permits. Authority having jurisdiction, I have a question on that. ALDOT is the authority having jurisdiction over the access that would come up from Greeno Road. Baldwin County is authority having jurisdiction for Main Street access that would connect to the three lots there. We may be, right now, the other right-ofways are Baldwin County, but they've made conflicting statements through the years. We had a couple of Baldwin County commissioners here that said it'll never be vacated, never be improved upon within those right-ofways. But in a request about a year ago, they said that's Fairhope's. They should be accepting those right-ofways. So I don't know the answer. And we're trying to, you know, this, I think the end result of this plan accommodates most concerns, but, you know, how do we get to the, the finish line? Relatedly, access from ninety-eight shall be approved by ALDOT and any required improvement shall be installed solely at the developer's expense. That one, we haven't got confirmation on. As y'all know, it takes a little time to get through ALDOT's review procedures. But number four, access from Main Street shall be approved by Baldwin County Highway Department and any required improvement shall be installed solely at the developer's expense. I did hear from the applicant and since writing the staff report and they have got confirmation that Baldwin County would allow access to those, what the details look like, we could handle at a preliminary plat. But access, and I believe they do show a shared driveway, so there wouldn't be, that's kind of a, a strange right-ofway. It, it's kind of hard to see that, but, but it's not your traditional right-ofway. And what they're showing is instead of having one driveway for each lot coming off Main Street, it's one, one drive that gets into the lots and then there's a, a shared access. And number five is street access in substantial conformance of the proposed site plan cannot be achieved within two years. The approved P U D shall resort to the Montrose P U D approved in ordinance nineteen fifty-six. Ultimately, the planning, I mean, the city council is the authority approving a P U D, so that last sentence, the two-year wind timeframe may be extended only by the city council. As we discussed, the forty-foot buffer shall be required on any lot abiding U S Highway ninety-eight. The area within the buffer shall be common area. Number seven, the buffer shown on the plans, and, and these are conditions from the previously approved. And I thought just, it's a good idea to bring these forward in the amended P U D. But the buffer shown on the plans and those required by condition shall remain natural except for the allowance of plant materials to be installed where a visual buffer does not exist. Number eight, where a visual buffer does not exist within buffer areas shown on the plan or required by a condition of approval, plant materials shall be installed to provide a visual buffer. Any item not specifically outlined in the P U D ordinance shall meet all pertinent regulations and ordinances, including but not limited to those outlined in R one. Purpose of nine there is while there were some things specifically outlined, like fences and an extra height, there's some things that we don't think about. So if it's not mentioned, it'll fall back to R one standard zoning in our, in our zoning ordinance. Number ten, all streets, whether public or private, shall be approved by the City of Fairhope Public Works Director. Connection, and number eleven, connection to existing utility infrastructure shall be determined prior to application for preliminary plat. And finally, number twelve, outside, any outside agency permits required shall be obtained prior to submission of building permits. Thought about adding one more, but I want to show you something, just make sure planning commissioners see this very clear, because our screen doesn't allow for this. But on the site plan, there are notes, red lines, and that dictates where access will be restricted. So to existing streets within Montrose, the only access provided is it, from Third. And then, I believe this is Coleman, there will be from Highway ninety-eight road into this area, but not connecting to existing streets that are currently being used. So the, the plan as submitted is, is accessing all of the lots from either Main Street, those three lots. Third, the lots one through three from the third street right-ofway and the rest are accessing from a, what will be a new access of in and out of Highway ninety-eight. So the, David Deal represents the applicant. He is here tonight and I believe Larry Chason is as well. If you have any questions from them, otherwise I can ask, answer any questions you may have.
I have just a clarifying question. So if, if this P U D were approved, but then the, the preliminary plat can still fine-tune that access?
It would have to.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
Yes. The, the mechanism for providing the goal, so the P U D is stating the goal, the preliminary plat would have to define the mechanism to make that work.
Okay.
As presented and.
And being substantial conform, it has to, it could be an entirely different idea. It would either be inside the lots or they'd work it out with the county.
Yeah. Or, or the city. I mean, it, it could be that the county, you know, turns those right-ofways over and the city can either come with agreement or vacate. Or, you know, it may be that the county vacates or comes to an agreement for a private maintained road. There's, you know, what those solutions are, I can't speculate. I think one of the first things to do is figure out, make sure ALDOT is going to give access. So.
So Hunter, the strip between lots three and four, for sure that can never be used for access to this development?
As long as, if, if this P U D is approved, it explicitly states that that shall not be accessed. So I don't believe providing access to that would be in substantial conformance. So we would certainly never approve that. And if they came back with a preliminary plat that showed that, I think the planning commission would have every authority or the, you know, to say absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I can't say they would never come back and ask for an amendment to a P U D, but then that would have, be an opportunity for planning commission and indoor city council to say no.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe that's the intent, though.
Any other questions for Hunter?
Okay.
Would, the public hea-, we haven't opened the public hearing yet, sir. Would the, would David, would the developer like to speak? The public hearing will be after the developer has the chance.
Good evening. David Deal with S E Civil. We have no issue with the conditions the staff has put in on. Like Hunter said, this is kind of, to get us halfway there, it's really a zoning issue. Like Hunter said, this is kind of, to get us halfway there, it's really a zoning issue. And we, you know, there's gonna be a lot of details that will be worked out for the preliminary plat, design specifics. We have met with Hunter a couple times, and he represented the concerns that he had heard about from neighbors. And so we tried to reflect that here without, you know, accessing through areas that people had concerns about. Basically, we're just trying to get it, with the exception of the three parcels on Main Street, we're just trying to get it back like it was before that PUD was approved in 2015. We had initially thought it had expired because the two years was up, but we found out there was no reversion clause, and so we're, we need to make a revision to the PUD to get it back like it was.
Okay.
And there's, there's one other thing that, and I don't know, I don't want to muddy the waters anymore, but there is a purchaser that is looking at buying lots four, five, and six?
If we can make that work on the mouse. That is, that's these three lots.
Yep. So if with this approved PUD, we come back for preliminary, can we have a condition that we can plat that is one lot instead of three?
Well, and with the understanding, because I want to make sure David is speaking for his client clear, as long as that stays R1, you know, that would still be...
Oh, yeah, it's residential.
I don't want somebody to think somebody's gonna make it a bigger lot so they can do something else.
No.
That actually reduces the number of houses there and makes, that would make that be 16 lots. And there's nothing preventing that combination when it comes to preliminary plat, as far as I know.
So do we, would that, so that might not even need to be an explicit condition that if...
I think it's good to mention it, but I don't think that needs to be an explicit condition unless some, one of you have concerns.
No, is that a, is that a, would that change the entry point if that is combined lot as far as access to the roads?
No, sir. No, sir.
It actually is, there's a little stub heading to the north off of the entrance from 98, but to access those three lots, so...
That would not be needed.
That would not be.
To reduce the roads.
Yeah. And furthermore, if it is...
David, what's your, what's the status with ALDOT? You know, they won't give you an official opinion unless you turn in a permit. But Michael Smith looked at it, and he's...
Wait, 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 wait. Under what per, under permit, under what permit?
An access permit.
A permit for development?
The turnout permit.
Access.
For access.
Do you have one?
No, we're not gonna, we haven't engineered anything until we get through this zoning step. I mean, obviously, if ALDOT says we can't access there, this is a moot point.
Well, I mean, come on, really? There's, I don't see any, there's nothing up until you get to Sibley Street nor further down to the south that's got any access onto the four lane. What would be the problem?
I mean, I don't see a problem. I don't see a problem with it. I just don't have an official approval from them.
I'll, I'll ask my questions after the public hearing, but hang around.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for David? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would wish to speak, we would just ask, because there are a few people here who'd like to speak, we want to hear everyone's concerns, but if someone else has already stated what you came here to say, know that we've, we've heard it. And if everyone could try to keep their comments to about three minutes, we'd appreciate it. So...
And Chairman Attic, we've got some that have already signed up.
Okay, we'll already...
So we can go through that list first, and then if anybody else that didn't get a chance because it just didn't make it all the way around the room would like to speak.
Perfect. Okay, so Allie will go through the list and call people up, and at the end, if someone else would like to speak, you also get a chance.
Our mic won't too, since Allie's got a little bit of a cough. Has been tested, and she wouldn't make her part.
For this, we have a Ms. Debbie Quinn.
I'd like to go last, please.
We have a Frank Barlow at 7144 Chapman Street.
And would you just clarify, will, we will collectively write concerns down?
Good point. So just so you guys know, as you speak, we're not, we won't be responding to each person's concerns one at a time. We'll write them all down, and at the end, respond to all of them, and maybe bring up the developer to respond to some of them, or some of them, Hunter. They all will, you know...
Sure.
Be, you will get a response, but...
No worries. Madam Chairwoman.
Yeah.
You think you got that?
Thank you, thank you for getting me straight on that.
My name's Frank Barlow. I live on Chapman Street. And are y'all familiar with, have y'all ever read actually what the historic district is, or would you care to? I mean, I brought three copies for, I'll leave them on the table.
Sure.
Yeah. In 1964 is when it was actually created. And then we have scenic 98, which is becoming more like the Autobahn, it seems. So as long as the traffic goes out on Big Greeno, Big 98, that's my main concern. I do have a question for Hunter, if I may ask. Can these, further subdivide these lots once it's created in the PUD?
I think that's easy one to answer.
Okay.
I can't speak to the future, but if, if this was approved and a preliminary plat came in, there are one, they would have to come back and amend the PUD first and then come and ask for, and I just don't think there's power for that.
So the subsequent buyer cannot do that?
Not just go and do it. There would have to be an amendment to the PUD, because a PUD is site plan driven, so whatever's shown on that plan is what can happen, and can't...
I guess that's my concern, because I've seen where they just take a three-icar lot, then they further subdivide it, further subdivide it.
Right.
And it's being sold to us as big lots, and I'm just trying to figure out if it's, that's the true intent or not.
And as the planning commissioner knows, it's never say never if somebody tries to do something. But I think the PUD offers the protection to just say no. I mean, it's R1, it's sold as R1, and there's no requirement, this is not like a subdivision in unzoned areas. There's no, if it meets the, you have to approve it. There's, there's none of that.
The PUD is for this site plan.
Okay.
Thank you. And I do question the non-standard roads. If somebody gets hurt, who's liable for that? Because I live in the city, and we're approving that. So I can see where in this lawsuit-driven society, somebody's walking down the street. We have tons of walkers. That's the great thing about our neighborhoods. We do have small roads, but there's tons of people walking and everything, and there's a lot of green space. So that's one question. And then the other question is, why is there a huge buffer on Greeno, but yet it seems like in the PUD, we gave up buffer for the existing families who live there on the big lots? And that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just to keep it rolling, can I address those two? Those are...
Okay, but then you're gonna have to hold the rest in.
I know, I'm conflicting, but I think it will, so one thing I didn't mention, non-standard roads are, they would still be paved, I believe Richards said 18-foot wide, still have, you know, so there would be some standard roads there in what's proposed. And then the buffers got there because R1 has a 40-foot front setback. So there wouldn't be any buildings or anything there. That would still be along that area. And then as proposed, the residents that live on the west side, if that happened, would have access to 33 feet of vacated property potentially, or at least that right of way remain, would remain unimproved, 33 feet of it.
And if they come back with the preliminary plat with the, with the circulation, that would be another chance for everybody to look at the roads.
So once we kind of figure out that mechanism, it may be that we require that 33 feet to be undisturbed and, you know, how we figure that out. But it is, and the image on the right is something that would be included, so that's the 66-foot historic right of ways. And what they're illustrating there is a 33 feet to the left is where the 18-foot paved area resides, and then green on the, on either side, and then 33 feet on the west side is completely understirred.
So if that was vacated, that would go back to those homeowners on the west side?
I hesitate to explicitly state that because, again...
It's a possibility.
It could be Baldwin County, it could be typically, traditionally, when there's a vacation, if there's a property owner on either side of a right of way, one landowner gets half, the other gets, or at least an opportunity.
Yeah.
Each half. So that's why you see the 33 feet being used.
Okay. But that could be a condition of approval that the, how could that be a condition of approval if we don't know what's gonna, okay, it can't be. That's something for the preliminary plat to discuss.
Exactly.
Okay.
And at least there's a 33 foot, as presented on the master plan that shows it's understirred 33 feet.
Okay. So who's next on our...
Next, we have Mr. Ackmore at 22789 Ecker Rouge Lane.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. We're all gonna do that now, I guess. Thank you for your time. I don't know, those of you that know me, I was born and raised on Rock Creek, and I've seen it go from a beautiful T-running stream with fish and bass and all kind of wildlife to what I would call almost an agricultural ditch at this point. It's a sad thing to see our culture and our natural beauty being trampled by million cuts. And I understand about growth, I understand how things grow, but I also understand that there's a right way to grow. And in my opinion, we have some things on this plat, on this particular development, that need to be addressed. And one is the easement. If you, the problem, one of the problems with this flat image here is you don't see the topography of this land. This land that they're talking about developing has some extreme ravines and gullies. And when you have extreme ravines and gullies, you have runoff. And the runoff is extremely hard to prevent. You can have, you can have easements, and I'd like to say basically that I hope that we can look carefully at how we go about approving this to reduce the amount of runoff that will result from the development of these lots as platted. The easement, the, in green here, is not a conservation easement, as I understand it. And I would propose that it becomes a conservation easement so that no encroachment by those lots with small buildings and other things could take down trees or whatever to reduce the amount of runoff. And as Art knows, when you live on a creek like Fly Creek and things are developed to the upstream, the creek is degraded. And I'm asking you, and I'm asking the designers to, I know that we've reduced this from 25 acres to 17 acres in this particular plat, I would ask that you continue to look at ways to reduce the runoff. The three lots that are on Main Street, that is a ravine that is, to me, is almost unbuildable. It is so extreme. And that's why you can't really tell from this flat image. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider my comments.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Amy Thompson, 108 Fallsway Court.
Hello to all of you. I live right off Taylor Street, and I know Debbie Quinn, my neighbor, is gonna address a lot of the larger questions about the project, but one of my questions here, and it may be kind of covered in this land use segment about each lot being privately owned, but as far as the density on the lot itself, I know it can't be subdivided, but would there be allowance for guest cottages, for back structures that could then be rented or, you know, become Airbnbs? We just want some assurance that there would not be any kind of rental opportunity on these lots. And again, what kind of density beyond the main estate-type home would there be? Because obviously, that would all impact traffic and whatnot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next is Ms. Suzanne at 107 Magnolia Avenue, and they didn't write which case, I'm not certain if they're still here, they might have been here for the hotel. And next on the list is Michael, also at 107 Magnolia Avenue.
Probably not, for this one.
I believe they were, they were on the...
I think I know who they were. So that brings us to the end of our, end of our list with Debbie Quinn being the only one left on the list.
There's someone else raising their hand. Okay, I think we have two or three more people who'd like to speak.
I raised my hand, but they're covering the points.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Eddie Webster, and I live in Trentino.
And what's that right there? It's 18. 18 Trentino. And for the sake of my question, if you don't mind me asking, moving over here?
Can we get, excuse me, sir, can we get a clarification on that address?
18 Deavoliso.
Thank you.
Is this a lot?
Yes.
How do you access that lot?
That would, the only access that would have is from 98.
Okay. A very self-serving question, because I live right here. And as has already been mentioned, when I go out my back door and walk onto that property, it is extremely steep down to the creek from all of that area. And I am concerned about the runoff. I realize that's a huge lot, and a house that's built on it might not even be seen from my back door, because they would have to be way, way down the hill, so to speak, if you know what I'm saying. But I'm just concerned that this kind of has, has the potential of destroying the creek and all of that, and that, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. You had a question?
Hi, good evening. My name is Sabrina Ruffin, and my address is 23679 Third Street. And my question goes to, and I'm looking on my phone, too, because I really just can't see that far, but it's the Chapman Street, and I know you mentioned earlier, no access will be given from there. So if you're coming from lots one, two, and three, will you be able to proceed through Third Street, or that entire roadway right there is just gonna be deemed closed? And I just can't follow the picture.
I can't explain, but it is hard to get a big plan, and I can't even read. So this is, the east and west road is Chapman, right of way. There will be no access within that right of way anywhere. So where Third, Third Street is, and kind of the existing road that leads through there, that will be used at the end if you have two lots one through three, and that will be the end of it. So in practicality, there may be a extension of that somehow, or there may be an access scrubbed and blocked within the lots, their lots, in addition to what's existing there. But nothing would continue on to Chapman. And then depending on what happens to lots four through six, there would be an access coming through the Taylor Street right of way, but not connected through the existing road that would then access lots four through 14, I believe, and not connect, while it's connected, would not connect to any other existing street.
Okay, so if it's marked no access now, and this is approved, then if, and I assume Chapman is Baldwin County right of way, I don't know that for sure that it is. So if that is vacated, does the no access, does that act as a covenant? I mean, is that, is that in place, that's done? If it's vacated, then can it become access?
This site plan governs the PUD, so there's a, there would always be a zoning. This becomes, a PUD almost becomes part of our zoning map. So while you just see a shape with blue, the site plan, the master... site plan, the master development agreement, anything that's within that, the narrative, anything becomes part of that zoning. So because this site plan shows no access, it becomes part of the zoning. And in effect, creates a conflict, but this overrides. You can't just open up a right-of-way with, and be in disagreement with the zoning in place. So with that said, the no access would govern and offer a level of protection.
Okay.
That was my question. Thank you all.
I know.
I know. We're referencing a map there.
I know. Well, let's let Debbie go, and then we can answer all the rest of the questions that have come up about how, we'll go over this after Debbie.
Thanks. Thank y'all for letting us come tonight. I'm Debbie Quinn. I live at 7172 Taylor Street in the city of Fairhope. Taylor Street was annexed into the city about four years ago after the county paved it and said, here, take it, city. So anyway, when they paved it, they paved it to the middle of Third Street. So 33 acre, I mean, 33 feet of it is paved all the way. And then there's a driveway that goes south. It's a dirt road. I don't know if you can see it up there. You might can see it on your plat. I can see it on here. It's, well, it's kind of there. There's one existing house back there. And then Torrey has an existing lot, too, that fronts on Third. So two, two years ago, we went to the county about the roads that are in here to try and figure out how we could get rid of the accesses or get the, all the roads that are accessed in it into the city. And it was PC, pre-COVID. And so we met with the county engineers, the county street people. We met with Hunt, no, it was Buford, who was with the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, and Richard Johnson. And worked out that the county would give the city the roads, and the city then would, would work on that with the council after that happened. Well, COVID hit, and that was the end of that. So we're still here, and I would hope that the county would continue to go ahead and give all those access roads within the PUD to the city. I don't know. COVID's still going on. But what we're concerned about, a lot of people here, is Taylor Street. Because if they take half of Taylor Street with that Third Street, how would you, I don't know how to show it to you, then you've only got, like, 10 feet between the paved Taylor Street and their paved road. So how do you keep people from running across it with their big old pickup trucks and coming down Taylor going 40 or 50 miles an hour? Taylor Street's about 13 to 14 feet wide. We've probably got four or five historic live oaks on it that are gorgeous. They're Fairhope historic trees on your register. And we're just real concerned that right now, nobody can really pass without pulling off to the side of the road, which is great. We love it because it keeps traffic down. It keeps traffic going slower. We have a lot of kids, a lot of dogs, a lot of bicycles. So I don't know how to keep them from running across a 10-foot green space.
Okay.
And the same thing for Second Street. I don't know if you can see it, but Second Street is back toward the west from Third. And probably about eight years ago, is that right, Martin? It was semi-open just to get some rock back there in that drainage area. You see where the slant is back in there. And so it's large enough now for, like, a golf cart to go through. And it's never really closed up completely the way it was when some trees were taken out. So we're worried about that access, too, coming through Second Street behind all those houses. So I don't know what to do about that because it's wide open. I mean, 10 feet, or, well, there it would be 30 feet, 33 feet, just right over it with a big dooley, you know? And so that's one of the main concerns. The other one is, like, talked about with the conservation easement. In the original plat that we did in 2017, that was listed as a conservation easement, and they passed it with the conservation easement. Now he doesn't want it. He wants it to be a property owners' association that would maintain the easement, which we know about property owners' associations. So we would like to see it go back into conservation easement. It's very steep there, a lot of erosion. The whole water coming out of Rock Creek now goes north of the bay, not down south, because it pushes all that sediment north. And it's eroding all these people on the bay, like ACT. So I think conservation easement would at least keep people from cutting down bushes and shrubs and creating a denuded area.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
I guess that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, I think we have several questions about the conservation easement and the preservation of, prevention of erosion and preservation of green space and the topography. Some questions that really relate to how R1 zoning interacts with the PUD, about accessory buildings and what you could build in these lots that might be useful to cover as compared to the previous PUD. And access to the triangular lot, I know you have your own list. But then, you know, it's a very interesting question about the 10-foot separation between new road and old road, if we don't want them to get, what tools we might have to prevent that connection from being made.
And Madam Chairwoman, the public hearing is still open at this moment.
Before we close it, did anybody?
Does anyone, everyone's, nobody else would, like, wish to speak? We'll close the public hearing.
All right. So I'm gonna start out with the Airbnbs. So Airbnb, or the term we utilize is short-term rentals, are not allowed in R1. So that's in any residential, single-family residential zoning district unless you're in the CBD. Short-term rentals are not allowed. There, there is an allowance for long-term rentals, but we don't allow accessory dwelling units either. So we don't allow a dwelling unit to be built in an accessory building. And, and so, single-family is what we're, you know, our zoning ordinance requires on R1 property.
And then there's a maximum lot coverage.
There is a maximum lot coverage. I mean, the, you have some massive, single-family homes could be built on these lots. They're, they're very large. Topography's gonna limit that. You know, the buffer is gonna limit that. And of course, bigger setbacks than typical. But there is a, it was a question tied to that and something that we've made notes to. I think it would be, would have been great to have in our zoning ordinance actually estate lots. You know, the, instead of R1, estate-sized lots are common in a mini zoning ordinance. And we don't have that. So slightly different requirements than R1. So that's something that, as a zoning amendment, something the staff might bring to you in the future. But R1, and frankly, even that, as, as most people have, would be less restrictive than R1. But just to, to address the short-term rentals and the Airbnb type, that would not be allowed. Neither would a second unit as an accessory dwelling unit would be allowed on the site. Lot 18, you know, that one is, as they come in and get building permits, there, there is some unique setbacks that might be required on that because it is triangular. So probably at preliminary plat there, we're gonna have to really look at setbacks and how those are gonna be required. One thing that we don't know, we're assuming, making some assumptions here on floodplains and wetlands and those sort of things. Some of those have changed. Floodplains have changed, I believe, since this was adopted. It was right in that, so I don't know what was utilized. So if we moved to preliminary plat, some of that may change, that we would have to take a look at on what setbacks are. So I don't think it's the appropriate time to do that. But, but there would be a limited buildable area on that. And it's hard to see on this map, so I'm gonna see if we can get.
But if we approved this PUD and they came back with a preliminary plat that had a new access onto 98, is that in substantial conformance?
Yes, that's a drive. So that's not a shared access. That would just be a drive.
So anybody can.
One lot, one access. You know, what we're really concerned about that is 1, 2, 5, 11 lots are showing access from 98. So that's gonna have to have approval. You know, one, one lot, one driveway off is not a, a road, whether it's publicly maintained or privately maintained. So preliminary plat, looking at setbacks there, I think we, we would, you know, might be specific about that triangular piece of what setbacks are. But again, as we've required, that 40-foot buffer is gonna push it off 98. And, you know, the person who spoke about that is right. There, it drops off significantly as, as you get toward the darker green common area. That lot really drops off. You know, but, and, and without looking at those specifics, we still, that's a pretty big lot for R1. And looking at the adjacent-sized lots, you know, it's much bigger than that. So thinking there's gotta be a, you know, a buildable area there that can work within that, and we'll, we'll be able to better answer that in preliminary plat, what setbacks are. The conservation easement, so that actually did not get approved. The planning commission in the 2017 PUD recommended as a condition, there's a conservation easement. When it went to city council, and I believe rightly so, the planning director at the time and council agreed that the conservation, requiring the conservation easement was, was not the appropriate instrument. It didn't prevent them from putting it into a conservation easement. For, for all I know, they still fully intended to do that. It required it to be a common area that, and was not approved as a conservation easement. So I don't, you might, Mike can answer the applicant, what they, their intentions are with that, if it's common area or, or put it into a conservation easement. But that became an issue of a, a civil issue as opposed to a zoning issue. So
Okay.
That, that, you know, that was, that was what happened with others. We're following up with that. It didn't make sense to require a conservation easement when it didn't get approved in the last one. And access to Taylor Street, you know, that's those details that I don't know the answer to. I think it'd be good to ask the applicant if they have any ideas. If you've just got a 10-foot strip because they've paved already and some of those, what, what options do we have? You know, is it a barricade? Is it, you know, do they have to curve that into the lot? You know, that, that's one I don't know the answer to. But, but I get, you know, how do they accommodate that no access? You know, there is, in the definitions and the, which, what I think you see unique in the conditions, and it was in the approved PUD. We have buffers all the time. So, but it's very specific that that is a visual buffer. And where there's no trees, and where there's no, you know, where, where you can see through it, you've got to, you know, the developer has to put plants in there that would protect that. So maybe that's the option within that 10-foot area. You know, there's, there's trees planted or, or something along those lines. But, but I'd prefer, at least, let's start with applicants, see if they have any ideas. And if not, then we can accommodate that at preliminary plat and figure out what it is. Whether that's a, unless y'all have something you'd like to make that a condition explicitly, that's the details that I think can be worked out. But I think the important thing there is there's no access. And how we make, make that happen, be a little flexible on. Because we just haven't been looking at it at that level of detail. I think, do you have any other questions written down?
Well, we probably have some questions for you. I think Art has some, and I know I have a list.
How could you tell? You know, I'm not gonna sit here and, and, and say one way or the other at this particular moment. But didn't, don't we know that lots 1 through 9 are platted lots?
They are.
Why does everybody think that all of these streets were platted in Montrose? I mean, the big question is, they were platted for a purpose, right? For the development of Montrose. And what's happened here over, probably for as long as I can remember, for 45 years or so, the Thomason family has wanted to do something with this, but there's always been a, a lot of bruhaha over it. But I mean, really, you've got streets that are platted in here. And I'm looking at, at the no access on Lead Yard going out to, going out to Main Street. And I asked the question, why? Why, why is that continuity out to Main Street not, not, not part of it? But I'm not here to argue one way or the other. I'd ask Larry Chason that when he comes up here to talk, and I know he's gonna do it in a minute. But I, I just, I just don't get it. Those streets were here for a purpose. They've been here forever. Well, not forever, but for as long as all of these, that Montrose was platted. And I, I just don't know. Other thing has to do with conservation easement. Dealing with conservation easement for the last 25 years, I can tell you, that's not a manageable conservation easement. It certainly would be more logical to have it in, in a D easement. And, and that's just kind of the way that that is. One of the things, one of the other things, maybe it's not yours, but the access out onto the 4-lane, is, do you think there's a, was there a reason to run that access out where it did not match up with the crossover just to the north of it? Because you know what's gonna happen? Just like what happens all up and down that 4-lane. You got people coming out of there, and you talk about a train wreck. They're gonna try to make it across to get to the north, which they shouldn't be going to, to get across there instead of having to go all the way back down here to, to the next turnaround and come back north? I just, I just question.
I see your logic there, and I.
It's, they do it, I mean, they do it all up and down the 4-lane on a regular basis. And it just doesn't make sense if you've got that kind of a crossover
Yeah.
To be able to accommodate that.
Maybe because Chapman lines up with Rock Creek Parkway that they thought that was too.
Well, are you talking about the, the crossover just north?
Just north, right there, just north of, yeah.
You know, I, I would assume they're trying to stay within the existing right-of-ways. But I think that would be something that
Which right-of-way?
The, Chapman, that's existing, keeping the, that lot the same.
But there's another right-of-way that does line up.
It wouldn't take much to make it match, make, make it match up. Anyway, that's just no fault.
If it were at Chapman, it would line up with a crossover. But it may be too busy of one.
That one may be too busy. I see where Art's just.
Yeah, it just misses it. If somebody tries to go backwards down 98, that's gonna happen.
It happens all the time.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay. Rock on.
Well, and you want the applicant to address any?
Yeah. Larry, you gonna talk?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and I have a couple of questions to both of you. Maybe I'll just pile on before you walk up. Just with the, with the questions about conservation easement, gullies, and topography, you know, instead of a common area, could, could it be a designated green spa? I mean, we have different types of green space from park to, is there a wooded? I don't remember off the top of my head. I know we have playgrounds, you know, recreational green space, park.
What, what this would fall under in the green space document is a preserve area.
So could it be a green space preserve? And that would effectively do the same thing as?
Well, I think the difference between, I think the, the goals are a little different. Where collectively, everyone within this subdivision would have maintenance over that as, as a zoning or subdivision case of a common area. Where a conservation easement would provide a third-party
I'm not talking about a conservation easement. I was talking about in the PUD, instead of calling it a common area.
Label it.
Label it.
So that label will protect it, is what she's asking.
A green space preserve, as that's what it's designated for in the PUD, not a common area that could be interpreted in many different ways.
Sure.
And I, I think that.
Because that would still allow maybe for trails or things like that. But it's making it very clear it's not intended to be cleared.
And that is in our zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision regulation, that chart, for anybody that's curious, in the green space, there's, there's different sizes. And to get a preserve, you have to have a minimum of three acres. I think this accommodates that with excess acreage. But yeah, that's something we could certainly accommodate on the plat.
And I just had, the, the other question I had is just about setbacks. Do, do the R1 setbacks prevail? Or do they need to establish setbacks within the, within the PUD?
R1, so 40-foot, 40-foot, unless you wanna explicitly state on each lot, you know, look at it at that review, and explicitly state a setback for each lot, then R1 is what, is what's proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, for setbacks. Building height is five foot. Building height is five foot different on those. And the northern half of, northern twenty feet of Lot One has a twenty-foot visual buffer sitting on top of it.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm sorry to delay you, that, I just...
Let me get out of, just trying to make some...
I'm Larry Chason, and, uh, I've been working with the Thomasons for about six years, so I hope y'all can't ask me any questions I hadn't thought about. Uh, but, uh, if there anything in particular that, that we wanna talk about, um, as far as your comment about, that's, you know, if you move up to the next existing right-ofway, you're right across the street from all the traffic with Rock Creek, um, it didn't make, you know, we, we, there was a good bit of comment about that.
You got a big gully going through there, I believe.
But there were a lot of people that, we, we've been trying to do whatever made the most folks happy, and, um, closing off that north, that east-west northernmost right-ofway that lines up Rock Creek is what we were asked to do, is don't put your entrance there. So we moved down to the next one, and, and I think it's actually the perfect one in that it's kinda in the center. Um, and the fact that...
Is there a potential to connect it to that kind of...
No, well, I mean, that's not our desire. I mean, that thing got put there by, by, you know, LDOT, and, you know, I, I know that there are some other places, uh, on Highway ninety-eight where possibly just the construction of your exit with some curbing would make people make a right-hand, more of a right-hand swing, maybe by putting a little more turnout radius right there. So that trying to make a hook back would be much harder. Um, I guess at anywhere where you came on, if somebody wants to drive the wrong way on Highway ninety-eight, I, you know, I don't know what to say about that. I wouldn't do it. But, but, um, we, we, if you go further south, then the topography becomes an issue. So, that's the logical place for it. And if the only issue is that the crossover, if you're gonna call it that, I guess we could talk to LDOT about digging it up.
Well, they may not want you to be there, but let me ask you this. Where are you, I asked David this, where are you with LDOT?
Well, you know, there's been, all along, it's, it's a pretty big, you know, idea to promote all of this. As, as Hunter says, zoning is really the first step because without the old PUD going away and this becoming something, then there, there wasn't any point in talking about, you know, applying for a permit and doing all that. Um, you know, we're hopeful that this is, from what I've gathered, this is a very popular plan to go from seventy-something houses down to seventeen or eighteen houses, big lots. You don't see that very much. Gonna greatly reduce the number of trees that are gonna be removed. I mean, thought this is, is just basically, uh, going to a point you made, Art. I mean, this is the way this was laid out a hundred years ago. And these are big lots, you don't ever see these anymore. So that, we see it, and we think a lot of other people see it as a real welcome addition to the availability of housing and, and Fairhope to have a, a place to build a, a big house on a big lot, if that's what you wanna do. Um, so, I can't imagine with fifty-eight acres that LDOT wouldn't give you at least one access. That's all we're looking for. So, I, I, I have to say that I put that kinda in the category of the same thing I do with the county and the roads. I've had experience talking to the county about, you know, these right-ofways, and I can tell you, they wanna give them to the city of Fairhope. The county attorney in my presence at a, at a county commission meeting said that the law had changed and that Fairhope couldn't refuse to take them, since they are incorporated on both sides. That was David Connor speaking to the county commission. So, when I first met with Hunter, we both agreed that the turnout to LDOT and the county turning the right-ofways over to the city were ninety-nine point nine-nine percent probability. So let's move on to the zoning question, and let's see if we've got a PUD that we can, can use here. And if we can, we feel very confident that we can handle both of those.
Okay, let me, let me, give me go a step further just on this, and I don't wanna belabor this all night, but the, the issue in talking to Hunter about this has to do with someone wanting to buy three, is that right? Somebody wants to buy three lots?
Four, five, and six.
You, well, no. Um, there is one potential for a person that does want to purchase three for one owner, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, that's what I think David Deal said when he was up there. All right. But the question has to do with if, if that happens, then how, I mean, do, do, the issue about getting a building permit? Or if this doesn't go through, let's say LDOT says, no, no, we're not gonna allow, we decided because we're LDOT and we know everything about everything, we're not gonna allow this to happen, and, and so then now we gotta revert back to the previous PUD, I think is where this thing is going.
Well, the previous PUD was approved without...
So you're gonna, you're gonna change the PUD, but if the PUD doesn't work, then the PUD doesn't work, then it reverts back to the original?
No, the, the previous PUD was approved with no permit from LDOT.
Well, I understand, but there was, most of us were not here.
Your concern is you don't want it to revert back to the previous PUD.
I don't want it to revert back.
Yeah, and all I can say is...
Revert back to residential agriculture, is that correct?
I'm sorry? No, it's already, it's already platted lots. None of those are already platted. So, I mean, it would revert back to the PUD that's in existence right now.
That's what Hunter said earlier.
So, no, but what we've made as a condition is it reverts back to the, the existing PUD. If it doesn't, the, what our zoning ordinance says is everything reverts to agriculture.
Residential agriculture.
Now, what, the reason that's there is actually protecting the city. Because while David Connor may or may not be right about the right-ofways, i- if we own property on both sides of a right-ofway, then we should accept those. That's not the case in everyone because it's kinda hit or miss there in Montrose. Some are in the city, some are without, some may even be Daphne. It's where it gets blended there. The city annexed in based on a road that is shown within that PUD. The city did not annex in with agreement to improve these right-ofways like they are. So reverting back to the Thomason PUD of two thousand seventeen offers the city a level of protection that I, I think is important. If they can't make this happen, it's gonna have to be another revision anyway. But we didn't, never agreed to those, uh, right-ofways as currently drawn to, to open those or improve those. And, and that's a level, if we're going that route, well, I'm, I don't want this to happen because I think there's ultimately a good solution here, then we need to go back to the drawing board. Because that is, that is something that we, we haven't reviewed that condition. I think it, we're getting out of the way to get these access things agreed upon, but having that contingency, if that can't happen, we, we stay pat.
Yeah, I would need to, I would need time to review, and I haven't studied that, that condition under those circumstances. So, in terms of the legal consequences of that.
Well, and that's certainly something that we need to consider. The other thing is, is if, uh, you know, maybe, uh, what did David say? You've gotta have a...
Well, I, I think the county's position, Art, would be that if the city doesn't wanna take them, then they'll work with us. But when I went in there to say, I gotta deal with the city here, and then I gotta deal with the county on the right-ofway, and I said, so, we'd like permission, and they said, well, we, we're not gonna give you permission, cause really that's Fairhope's call. So, go see Fairhope about it.
Yeah, we need to make it easier for you in some way.
So, I mean, we've just been caught in the middle of, you know, who's going? But, but these, this, it's a public right-ofway, it's a planted public right-ofway, and it's been there for a hundred and twenty years.
Right.
And, and as far as we're concerned, as you, the point you made, it was put there to access all these lots we're talking about in this PUD. So, to use it, to me, just follows a line of common sense. To talk about whether or not, and I did talk to Mr. Johnson about whether or not vacation is the way to go, um, you know, we felt like if the city would wanna vacate it, then that just gives the people on the west side an additional thirty-three feet, and it gives them everything they want, which is a buffer, which is the ability to stop any, uh, you know, any, I mean, they, they, they now have what was public to, to build a wall, if you wanna call it that, to protect their part on the west side from us. I, I teased Ms. Quinn that we didn't want all these people on Taylor Street coming through our nice new neighborhood. We'd just as soon see a barricade put there. So, you know, it's, uh, so, so we, we...
Yeah, what's good for the goose, right?
That's right, that's right. We figured it worked both ways. But anyway, um, never been any intention to ever try to open any of those right-ofways that go on through Taylor Street, being the prime example. We don't want it, we don't need it. We've offered every assurance we can to me. Barricades aren't pretty, but that certainly stops a truck. I would just go in there and plant some big trees. And, and that would be their right to do that.
So, so we wouldn't, um, well, we can't really require a condition of anything in those right-ofways, cause they're not our right-ofways.
That's exactly right.
Well, that's, that's correct, and that's, we're just trying to get there.
Yeah.
And this is step one.
So, but just to answer Debbie's question, you know, if, if, if we're thinking about, can we require trees to be planted to stop those, those streets from merging? We really can't because it's, it's, right now, it's county.
Well, all I can take...
But, but in the, when it comes for a replat, that is something that could be...
We have no intention or desire, you know, so...
Yeah.
We, we, we gave up another, in this drawing that you have, we took twelve feet off of the west end of all these lots to add to the thirty-three feet, to give us enough to, for us to be able to, to work within our own space and leave that alone. So, we, we, we would just as soon leave all the trees that are growing in it right now, just leave them there. So, uh, that's our, that's our intent.
I don't believe you can plant anything or, or construct anything in, in what right now is a county right-ofway to block off Taylor Street. I mean, something's gotta happen with them.
Right.
They've either gotta be, I, I don't know, maybe vacated, they belong to the city, and the city can do it, but not the developer and certainly not us.
Well, I, I'm not going, uh, you know, Mr. Richard Johnson's not here, uh, but we've discussed all this, and, um, we, we, we just think that the procedure to get these right-ofways put over into the hands of Fairhope is as simple as talking to the county highway director and have him write a letter saying, y'all own both sides of the street, you now have the responsibility. He doesn't even think that there's gonna need to be any official action of a conveyance. Uh, there's a lot of that that has gone on between Daphne, Fairhope, Spanish Fort, and the county taking over. Yes, typically, maybe. Uh, the county paves it and then turns it over, but not in this case. And the city has no money, nor does the county. These are just on-paper right-ofways, nobody's invested a nickel. So we'll be the first ones to actually do something with it. Got it?
Okay.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more? Any, any, any further discussion?
Mm-mm.
Do we, I, I would like to see that, uh, in a motion, I'd love to see that common area renamed a, a green space preserve. Um, so this is certainly, with the questions about erosion and topography and runoff, this is a much better situation with the zoning of R1 than, than what was previously proposed.
Yeah. We can add that to the conditions, correct?
This is that thinking on the fly here, but preserve, what I'm worried about, this is very small text, so...
Would you like to...
There is a, I can't hold it far enough away. There is a preserve, and there's also a trail greenway. I would worry that preserve is...
Put it on there.
Would prevent, I'm gonna step right here, question like, if we say preserve, it might prevent us from having trails or us, them providing trails in there. I know that's kind of a vision to, to kind of provide even...
No, trails are provided in the preserve. That, my question is, the trail in Greenway is sort of linear and connects things, and I don't know that we're really doing that.
Right.
But it does say, um, generally contains little or nor constructed improvements, although trails may access the preserve.
Perfect.
So...
May access, would be located within?
Well, if you're accessing it throughout, I guess that, that's a little bit of interpretation. I would say that if you're accessing it, you're walking through it to access it, not just getting to the edge.
They're not created trails, is that correct? Constructed trails?
And there's something we haven't discussed.
No, it sounds like constructed.
If those right-ofways are vacated around the common area, I would...
They wanna keep the nature, the natural scope of it properly, correct?
Assume we would allow that to be included in the common area as well. You see the two unopened right-ofway, one cuts right into the, the common area, that void within the dark green area on the plan. So that could be, that could accommodate and be added to the, with the assumption that those can be vacated.
It seems like the most protection. If you go to park, you could, you know, decide you wanna ski on the gully and clear it. I don't know. That's a good thing there. Do we have, um...
Put that in record, that's a story.
Motion.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to move on.
Yes, move on.
I'll make a motion. You wanna make a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
John, wanna make a motion?
Yeah. I, I move, we, uh, we approve, uh, zoning change request, EC twenty-one point one-five, Montrose PUD amendment, uh, subject to staff recommendations and the thirteenth edit that designate the green spaces as a preserve.
And it will be a recommendation?
That's a recommendation of the city council.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, recommendation to the city council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's your message. Okay.
Moving now.
Yeah, we gotta speed up. Um, so, item C on the agenda is EC twenty-one sixteen, that, uh, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant David Deal, acting on behalf of the owners, John Albert Watkins, Jr., Hilliard Von Street the Third and Sunny Hill LLC, to establish initial zoning of PUD concurrent with conditional annexation into the city of Fairhope, to be known as Greenfields PUD.
Okay. Just a moment.
Okay. Figured I'd get all that out while they were leaving.
Perfect. So, this did come in as a request to rezone to PUD. Um, it's a pretty quick staff report because, or, or presentation here, because as we got to looking at this, and, and I can tell you what's proposed within the PUD, so we have, for reference. Uh, there were eighty single-family lots on thirty-nine point nine acres, and that provided a gross density of two units per acre. It is currently two pieces of property owned by two different people. The development has a contract on those two, and once, if approved, would purchase and get all that cleared up in the same, and then come back with a preliminary plat. As we got to looking at this, uh, you know, the, the PUD is designed to do something unique. This comes up all the time. Um, and there was really not much unique about this. It met everything for, um, for R2 single-family zoning, and within the PUD, they provided home plans as required. And we got to looking at those, and those seemed to me like they would fit within the principal setbacks, but there was a, there was a question, cause that was really the only difference, is the front and rear setbacks were thirty feet instead of thirty-five feet. So, we had some discussions, and it appears that R2 works for the applicant. This is very similar to the lot sizes at adjacent Graythorne and, uh, nearby Miller's Crossing. It's the same size lot, so I can kinda go back to, the image on your right is the aerial, and that is Graythorne to the south, uh, is providing the connectivity in the plan approved for ref- or shown for reference. As we know, and, and no planning commissioners know, but I'll just repeat for the public, with straight R2, there's no site plan with it. So, what staff is recommending is, we do not recommend approval of PUD because it's misuse of the PUD. Uh, in, in lieu of that, we recommend... Uh, in, in lieu of that, we recommend approving as R2. The, um, the conditions there, sta, uh, traffic study shall be provided that includes all traffic generated by Greenfields with a first application for preliminary plat. And Fairhope Water and Sewer, while they provided availability letters, connections to existing infrastructure, including routes and potential upgrades, uh, were not refined. So, those be approved before submitting for preliminary plat. And this would be a recommendation to the city council. So, there will be an opportunity to, to advertise, we will advertise for the rezoning case. We'll do that to, with anyone within 300 feet of the prop, subject properties, as well as advertising twice for the public hearing for city council. So, if there's any questions on this, I'll be happy to. But although you saw plans within your packet, this is a straight rezoning to R2 as we recommend. I don't think, at this time, we're ready to, to recommend approval of the PUD, if you should choose to go there.
Is the applicant agreeable to go with R2 and not the PUD?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we can check, see if they change their mind. It's been a week since I've spoken with them. But David here is, David Deal's here to recom, recommend, uh, represent the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, great, uh, David, do you want to speak before you open the public hearing?
Just real quick, so you don't think we're nuts. The reason we came in with a PUD, they initially had some house plans that were much deeper. And as we got to the end, uh, talking with Hunter, the house plans that decided to go with all the other large house plans, they didn't require the extra room that we thought we needed. So, R2 works fine.
Okay. All right, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
I'm Harold Street, live at 8981 Kenbro, 32. Own property on both sides. My family's formed that for years. My nephew kind of blindsided us with this, just writing up our property. But, uh, I know I can't stop progress, but it needs to consider a couple of things. The, Phil has trouble providing water to everybody out there already. And they really need another sewer treatment plant, because the one's overloaded, and they have trouble with that. And we have more trouble with subdivisions than we give them. I've got land by two of them, and I'm constantly throwing junk back that they put on me. And, uh, if this is approved, I'd like to ask them to put a fence on each side so they keep the junk off of us. I'm tired of throwing it back. You know, it's, it's, we've formed that ground over 60 years. Now, my nephews is forming it, but anyway, I'd like to consider a few things. I know I can't stop it, but it's not in our best interest anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to make sure y'all, I hope, uh, there, Mr. Street did send a, a letter in and along his, along with two others for other cases, we did get an email today. But golly, sent those out.
Okay. Would anyone else...
But that, but that is be all about, the time for that is during subdivision in terms of, if we go do something.
Let's, let's let everybody else speak before we get on to another discussion.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Street. I live at 8067 County Road 32. I farm on four sides of this potential development. I realize you guys don't make FAA rules, but the property to the south, I don't know if you could pull the map back up? All right, that one there, um, the property to the south of the place closest to 13, we formed that. Um, we've, we just started renting it. But anyway, nonetheless, we grow corn on that property, and I have to use an aerial applicator to do such. But with this subdivision being brought in on the north side, and you already have one on the east side, I can't fly that prop, we can't do it. I mean, we can fly those planes and those service, those training planes night and day. It is what it is, but I won't be able to fly that. So, constant, these, these choices that are being made are consequential to my living. It is what it is. I realize there's development, but there's all these things that no one considers, it doesn't seem. We've been farming, my family's been farming it for 60 years. I've been farming for 32. And I farm on four sides of this property, um, the development. Anyway, um, it's just things that need to be considered in future development. You know, it's very frustrating that we, we can train all these people to protect us. I hear, uh, when you ask about it, it's the sound of freedom, and that's fine. I'm all about the military and training these pilots to do what needs to be necessary. But we're trying to feed the world, and we're being choked out in this county. And we've been here, this has been an agrarian county from day one. And now, we're just being choked out. Now, I know how the Indians feel, and there's nothing we can do about it because I can't pay $30,000 or $40,000 for this property. It is what it is. It's just things like that that need to be considered. And also, I'd like to say, this is a broad statement, but I farm all over Baldwin County, from the east side all the way down to Bonsacour, all the way to the bay. And I'm yet to see a development. When we get these five and 10-inch rains, which you all live here, you know, we, it never stops. I've yet to see one, when you get on the downside of this, these developments, that aren't full of red dirt, going into our watersheds, our beautiful bay, all these rivers. It is what it is. I'll shop at the New Publix down, I live right by it. But I farm the property to the south of the New Publix on the McLean property. And all summer long, all that wonderful red dirt's flowing through that property, going right into Mobile Bay. And I'd like to thank you guys for your time, but I want you to consider this, not only just this development, but all of them, because erosion is killing this community's wonderful watersheds. And I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And there is, I mean, I'd like to encourage you to participate in the comprehensive plan process because those are huge concerns that we have to grapple with. And there's a watershed management plan process going on right now, too. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Come up to the mic, please, and...
I came in because I thought I really was misinformed and thought there was a different meeting going on because I needed to speak to another problem development in the middle of town. But I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering, so how...
Give your name and address directly.
Jody Harper, 3 Marchand Street. I'm just trying to get my hands on, in my mind around, how long has this been under development? This piece?
Nothing's...
So, nothing's done?
No, this is, that's what we're looking at, a rezoning request or a PUD request, so it would be the first step.
So, nothing has been approved yet?
No. This is...
This is the process.
And it involves how many houses?
The PUD was 80. But as, as staff recommends, R2 would be similar, but we wouldn't know that until they came back. If it was approved.
And just really to speak to everyone, so if this wasn't approved, for example, and this just stayed unzoned county land, so...
They would, you, they could come back in with a preliminary plat that meets our subdivision regulations, which require 100-foot lots, 15,000 square-foot lots. If our subdivision regulations are not there, and the counties exist only, which is a possibility in the future, they could come in with 6,500 square-foot lots.
How many houses are proposed in this, and how many acres is it?
Um, we might need to get her, uh, well, if you can, if you...
I mean, I just, I'm just asking.
Again, this is R2 request as staff is recommending. If it's approved that way, then we do not have a site plan, so we can't answer that explicitly.
What we're, what we're considering is actually not the approving the PUD that was...
I think it's two, yes, I think it's, be simple, I think it's two 20-acre lots, which is 40 acres.
There's, there's eight, as, as the PUD appro, uh, is approved, is site plan there? 80 lots on 40 acres, two units per acre would be the density.
That's, that's what was proposed.
That's a close ballpark, if it's...
Wait, wait, how many, 80 lots?
80 lots on 40 acres.
Half-acre lot.
Well, that would be that. You'd have roads and green space and potential...
But you're thinking 80 houses on...
40 acres.
40 acres.
And, and the point, we're not thinking anything, we're not developing that...
Right, I'm just saying.
But the, the, the point I was trying to make is that where this zoning not approved, more density would be allowed.
So, you're, you're voting to control density?
That by zoning this, it is allowing less density than would possibly be allowed in an unzoned state.
Currently, it's in, currently, this property's in the county.
Right.
It's not in the city limits of Fairhope. Part of this application is for it to come into the city of Fairhope.
Oh, so it could be zoned, rezoned?
And, but the, but the county has district zoning, but this is in an, this is in an unzoned district of the county.
And it's on 32?
So, their, their requirements, I think, would be 6,500-foot lots, isn't that right? So, when you talk about 43,560 square feet per, per acre divided by 65, that's pretty dense.
R2 requires 75-foot lots and 10,500 square feet for each lot, as opposed to 7,500 if it was unzoned.
And it's on 32 and 181?
It's north of 32, and it's east of County Road 13.
That's 13. You see the yellow piece of property?
Between 13 and...
Yeah.
98? No.
If, if, um...
181, 181, okay.
Yeah. If you don't have any other specific, I mean, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to know because I'm very concerned, and I listened to two men that I would side with the two men you just listened to.
Yeah, well, and this is all in the public record, too, and available on their website, all the details of, of, on the...
I'm having enough problems with the developer on Marchand Street.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would side with the two men you just heard from.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak to this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. So, the questions, you, it would be good to address the, the buffer. There was, there was some questions about fences and buffers, um, erosion. I, I don't know about the, the, the air buffers. That's, that is a new, um...
This is a zoning case, but it's not a subdivision. So, in terms of erosion and all the other stuff, it's kind of...
Well, and you mind if I just kind of shoot from hip on some of these? Because there's, there's a message I want to get out.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Eric, there is something you can do, that there's, uh, this is all unzoned area. If your vision is to keep things agriculture, then you can zone it agriculture. You know, you can have zoning. And whether that's in the city of Fairhope or Baldwin County, there is a consideration. I believe the proposed districts extend down here. And if that's agriculture, then, then that's what it is without a process. But, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the, the farming, and I'm not speaking to these, I've never met either one of these gentlemen, but a lot of the folks out there doesn't, don't want zoning. And that's the one thing that can kind of protect this area and the farmers. Um, and it's happened elsewhere around the country, elsewhere around Baldwin County, when you get over in Alberta area and some of those that do have counties on it that protects the farmland. It's unfortunate, but that's sometimes the only protections you have when you have development of this nature. He brings up good points on the fly, the cross. I, I don't know the answer to that one. Never had to have that, that question come up. What, what protections are there? Art, you've been around the county for a while, has that ever, you ever had to...
It was, it's always, it's always been a problem, even back when I first got on planning commission for the county 20 years ago. It was a problem then, especially down the Alberta area. And, uh, they had, they had some, some real serious, some real serious issues. And, and it wasn't just in spraying, it was the, the amount, the number of people in the subdivisions that, the, the farmers have been there forever, right?
Right.
The subdivisions come in, and then what do they want to do? On a dry time like before today, on a dry time like now, you start turning the field over? You got a, you got a dust bowl. So, then everybody that's got their windows open want to raise cane about the, the farmers out there doing this, that, and the other thing, and that's part of it. But you're exactly right. Now, here, and, and I'm not going to go into the long detail, but here's the other thing associated with it. Right now, as, as I think Rebecca said, that we're in the process of redoing the comprehensive plan for the city of Fairhope. But now, here's the big issue. The city, the comprehensive plan for the city of Fairhope is only within the city limits of the, of the city of Fairhope. We, the problem we've got is being able to control the halo around the city limits. And unless we working with the county, we, I don't know why we're doing a comprehensive plan because unless we can have some kind of control over the, over that halo, then everything in the future is going to be limited to the current city limits unless somebody wants to annex it, and it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, yeah, you're right.
We have some influence, if we have a comprehensive plan, we can look at our planning...
And we, and we are, and we are working with the county.
Okay, good.
Yes, we, we, we're not behind that eight ball.
All right, that's wonderful to hear.
We are working with the county. All right.
Okay.
Um, you know, red soils, I will talk about that. We do, we did have a, a red soil and clay ordinance that is a standalone ordinance that doesn't apply if things are developed outside of our city limits. That is one of the standalone that does not apply. That's where annexing in actually becomes where any development there has to abide by those regulations.
In terms of bringing in red soils?
In terms of whatever protections we have within that ordinance.
Stormwater.
You know, and, and there's a, some misconceptions about red soils. Sometimes it's just a colorant, and there's no solids within that. We've actually had, went out and put stop work orders in the past, and then had the water tested. And there's a very specific reason, you know, where you, you make that determination. So, it's hit or miss. Sometimes those have, yep, they, they're actually have, you know, are not doing what they're supposed to, and then sometimes it's just a colorant.
There are, there are many times down here that your red, that the red clay that you see in, in the water is not the clay, it's coloration of the sand.
That's right.
It's sandy, they call it sandy red, red sand or sandy red clay. And it's just, after a few rains, it's as white as beach sand, but it's still got that red tinge to it. So, anyway, that's...
Yeah. So, that, there's, but again, those, those, if approved, would, would be something that preliminary plat would look at. And then at least, we would be able to utilize those ordinances being zoned as opposed to if it was...
So, um, I don't, I don't know, I'm sure this doesn't really fully address people's concerns, but I hope you hear that, uh, the, the intent in zoning property is to provide more protections and less possible density than the alternative. And our, our tools are somewhat limited, you know, and we have those pain points of development pushing up against agriculture, and this is part of the stuff we have to deal with right now.
Uh, one, one more question. The, the, the rezoning recommendation of the county is for R2 conditioned on annexation.
Yes, it is.
Still is?
To, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I got them.
We, we could otherwise not rezon, if it didn't...
I'm sorry?
We could not rezone without the conditional annexations, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right, that's right. So, I would make a, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Uh, ZC 2116, Greenfields rezoning request. I recommend, we recommend of the county commission, uh, it's county commission, city council, approval subject to, uh, conditioned on annexation.
There are other...
As an R2?
As an R2.
As staff recommendations.
And staff recommendations.
Second, with staff recommendations, second.
Do we get that?
Yeah. And then your motion to include staff recommendations?
Can you say it?
What's that?
Did you say staff recommendations?
Staff recommendations.
And we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I got to go.
And we excuse...
Please excuse me, guys.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, could we take a short break? This is.
Great idea.
Okay, five minutes?
That means I'll have to run.
Seven minutes. Okay, I don't think I adjourned us, but we're called back to order. So the so the next item is the public hearing to consider the request of the Fairhope planning and zoning for an amendment to Article five, Section B, Central Business District in the city of Fairhope zoning ordinance to allow rooftop terraces.
Be the right, right spot. As you'll see, we have a guest tonight. Councilman Rail's here with us. And, you know, as as you all know, there's three people that can initiate a zoning amendment, planning commission, council members, and the planning group. And.
Thank you, Mike, so you can hear me. And and Councilman Rail had some requests, and we we looked, started looking at allowances for rooftop terraces. And I'm defining that, but kind of where we were going there, you know, with a with a three-story building, what can you do above above that? And sometimes it gets in the weeds, and one of the things that kind of trapped projects where it was a definition in the building code. So in the building code, a rooftop terrace, if you have a three-story building that's under the height limit, everything else is matching, you have a a building code conflicting with their zoning, with their intent of the zoning ordinance. A rooftop terrace is defined as a story or a floor. And as all of you know, in the CBD, we have a height limit of forty feet and a limit of three stories. So one of the big concerns is if we allow rooftop terraces on on a otherwise conforming building, it can't be three, you know, on the on top of a three-story building. So looking at that was kind of one of the main things we were trying to accomplish with this proposed amendment. And then that got into some details. So what we did here, and I'm gonna go, everything that we're showing for rooftop terraces is included within the CBD section, Article six, Article five, special districts, and subsection B, except for the definition where we'll get to. So we're kind of just showing on the slide where that section, CBD section is. It's under art, subsection three, and there's a you, where it talks about uses, and then we discuss rooftop terraces. I'm gonna get through that, show it, and just get it on the screen where we can actually see the language. So as proposed, this is proposed as an accessory use, and we'll kind of get to that nuance in the definition. So not a use that is included in the zoning table. This is an accessory use, it cannot be a primary use, it has to be ancillary to something else. And as proposed, we've also limited that, it's in the CBD section by its nature, but it be two zone property within the CBD. And the following standards applies as we've drafted those. So number one, to address that that definition of a story, for the purposes of the zoning ordinance, in this section, a rooftop terrace shall not be considered a story. That in essence allows a rooftop terrace to be on top of a one, two, or three-story building. Then we get into some of the the heights and and how that lays out on the roof, what can that be composed of? So we're actually getting into a little bit of form-based zoning we've discussed without having having the graphics. Especially, except as provided below in this section, the height of all structures owner within a rooftop terrace shall not exceed forty feet. So if you've got a three-story building and you have a rooftop terrace on top of it, nothing can be above the height limit of forty feet. There's an exception in in number three, and we've dealt with this on a few projects. Accessing that rooftop terrace typically requires ADA accessibility, which in means an elevator. And how you provide for that elevator is is challenging to keep under the the forty foot. So what we've allowed here, and what our intent is, is elevators and stairwells be allowed an extra five feet above the four foot, just in that small footprint of the elevator shaft and and stairwell, to to provide that enclosed area for the whatever that's associated with, where it's stairs, mechanical equipment for the 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 elevator. But in no case should that cover more than seven and a half percent of the the footprint of the building, the roof area. And it should also be ten feet from the roof's edge. Number four, structures other than those used for elevators and stairwells may be open or enclosed, but shall not cover more than thirty-three percent of the total square footage of the rooftop. That what this means is if you have a rooftop terrace, everything's under forty percent, but on your rooftop terrace, you can't cover it with enclosed areas. There's a need to do some of those things. If you had a a a serving area, a bar, for example, on top of a rooftop, there's some health department requirements that there should be covered. People may want some shade structures, and I don't think umbrellas are appropriate on a on a forty-foot building that can blow off. So so that allowance was was what we're doing there, but but keeping some, you know, there's been this complaint against just big boxes. So having some architectural details in that, that's one way to accomplish those. And then the last one, in number five, the outer boundary of a rooftop terrace shall be defined using a barrier meeting the city of Fairhope building code. That barrier shall be minimum of five per, five feet from the roof edge. So if there's a safety requirement, and we don't want people just walking off the edge of a building, of course, you've got to meet the building code for that. But we want that to be not at the edge of the building either. So there's at least some kind of architectural details and and requirement. And then in Article nine, because this is a a defined term, rooftop terrace, we needed to add a definition. So the way we have proposed that definition is an outdoor amenity area located on the roof of a building, a rooftop terrace shall be accessory to the primary use of a building. Individually owned and operated business or venue shall not occupy a rooftop terrace. So if if it's independently owned and operating, well, that becomes a primary use, not an accessory use. So that was strengthened there in in what we were looking at. So that's the language as we proposed it. I'll be happy to answer any questions or discuss anything you may, any questions you may have.
I I have a couple, I'll jump in, and I know we're tired, but I. One is just sort of nitpicky, just that accessory use, because it's not a use, it's a thing. I mean, a terrace is a is a, you know, description of a physical structure, it's not like a re, other uses, a restaurant, bar, entertainment, you know. So I feel like we're complicating that a little bit, and there might just be some wordsmithing to say it shall, it shall serve a use, it it cannot be an independent, you know, there's some way to wordsmith that, or we're not turning it into a use when it isn't a use, it's a structure. It's not, it's not a restaurant, you know, it could be a restaurant, it could serve a bar, it could serve an entertainment venue, it could serve any of those things, but just anyway, that that that's just a little thing. Also, we just want to, I don't want to, I I see the, I I think rooftop terraces can be a great amenity, and I I don't have anything inherently, you know, against them at all, but I I would think that if someone proposes a rooftop terrace, like perhaps the building's in all one height, you know, you have a two-story section and a three-story section, you want to propose a rooftop terrace on the two-story section, I don't think that already meets our zoning. It it doesn't exceed the stories, it doesn't exceed the height, and I don't think there should be a limit on how much of it can be covered. I think you could cover the whole darn thing if you want to. You know, it could, it could have a whole pergola over it or a roof, or it could be, it's, let's not call that an inset balcony. So I I kind of don't want to solve a problem that doesn't exist, you know, by by just having a blanket for all rooftop terraces, where if it, if we're not, if there's not something preventing it from being built, let's not, why why do we need to regulate it?
And and it's a great point, and something we've discussed internally, there, again, when you kind of write these, then you start thinking about unless you're laying in bed at night. And that that's a great point, you know, what what happens and and, you know, while we're here, you know, it's clear, it's clear to what our intent was. So somebody comes in with a two-story building and half of the second floor is a rooftop terrace, fifty percent is covered.
Yeah, what's the problem with that?
That's that's not a problem, and that's not what we're trying to accomplish by limiting that to thirty-three percent. I think that by its use and the definition of that, we say what a rooftop terrace is. And and again, that's clear while we're interpreting something we wrote. You know, how that evolves through history does is is provides, there's some concerns there. So, but I'm willing to, you know, any any help you get got getting to the.
Yeah, somebody wanted to jump in.
Pretend I'm staff now, since I was the one that proposed this ordinance. The 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 thing, go back to that, even though you can't, you're not exceeding, say, forty feet, by some some definitions, I think Eric Cortina has mentioned, maybe the fire code, a rooftop terrace is a story, and our current current ordinances do not allow you to to have more than three stories. So you would be violating our ordinance, so we have to.
Not if, no, my point is, a two-story building.
No, no, that, so you wouldn't need it.
So that that's where this, this looks like this regulates all rooftop terraces, and I think we should narrow it to say, this is only, we're only trying to address rooftop terraces that would, you know, that need it.
It's a good point with that number there, what we're trying to do when you're up on top of a three-story building, we're limited to thirty-three percent, but if it's on top of a one-story building.
You could cover the whole thing, and it'd be great, you know.
And and I think the use, if it's a completely enclosed and a a use, then, you know, whether it's a restaurant, then you can, it can be independently owned. You know, you can have multiple options there. And I do, mainly, and the way we've written it, I see how you, I can define it. But I I do think interpretations there is, it, I get what your your concern is, it's not preventing the this, it's it's from that person that comes in and wants to just do a two-story building that's thirty foot tall and have the second floor half of it, would would this prevent that?
It it seems like it unnecessarily would regulate that.
Could you just ask, when when the terrace is above the third floor? Maybe to that, maybe some phrase?
Well, you know, the the developer builder doesn't have to designate it as a, he can designate it as a floor if it's just, if it's below the three-floor limit, and terrace is just a term.
And, I mean, there's.
I don't, I don't think.
I mean, theoretically, you could have two.
You know, they may designate it as a floor.
Yeah.
So that way, if he does, if he designates it as a floor, then then, and it doesn't exceed any of the zoning ordinances, then it can be independently owned, it can be covered up, you know, fully, that type of thing, so.
Yeah.
What if half of it's open and a rooftop terrace, and half of it's enclosed on that floor?
It doesn't matter. It's it, it's still a floor, as opposed, a terrace is just, you know, when I think of a terrace, I think of a garden, basically, or some some recreational space.
There are hell of a.
Yeah, I just don't know if that language actually.
It requires a bar to be.
There was something we got.
I did a building in downtown Mobile that had terrace on on the top, and there was nothing enclosed, we had functions up there all the time, but I may, maybe it's changed, I don't know.
So, and and I haven't had to experience a whole lot of that, a dead, assuming dead project, because we purchased part of the project. But the the hotel that was approved at the quarter of Fairhope and and section, they were looking at doing that and found a lot of challenges, and one of those things was a, where they had a full bar, there was some kind, you know, there was a requirement to have a a roof structure over that.
But it was a permanent bar?
Yes.
No, we're not talking about.
No, this would allow a permanent bar.
This would allow a permanent bar.
It could be independently owned and operated. But let's say you had an event space on the rooftop that was part of a that boutique hotel, same owner, same operator, just every once in a while, they moved up to the top, but the structure would be the same and or the permanent.
I I.
But limited to thirty-three percent. I I think we can.
Thirty-three percent is not small, depending on the size of the building, and and if, I kind of also wonder why we don't put a setback, if 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 our height ordinance means something, you know, we, and you allow that right at the edge, you know, the, there's a setback for the elevators and stairs, but not for the structure. It kind of seems like the structure should also have a setback if if we, if we're concerned about that.
And and we could carry that same ten-foot to the, from three on to four.
Redraft it.
Yeah, I kind of feel like we need a little more more time to massage this. My, I mean, the other concerns, you know, I'd heard some people casually mention, like, well, you might put tents up there, and and I'm envisioning that the Arts and Crafts Festival, when the storm came, it wasn't even a hurricane, and all those tents are rolling down the center of the, you know, all those tents with the weighted were rolling down the center of the street, and what what happens with your your rooftop terrace that had a tent that gets blown off?
Table umbrellas would be real nice.
I, I, I mean, I know some of that's handled by the building code.
You know, fine.
But I just think we have to be careful, because we are in such a high-wind area, to maybe research other precedents at the beach, you know, how people manage this in a way that's safe.
Surprisingly, there's not a whole lot on rooftop terraces. New York City has a big one, but that's a little bit different flavor, that's residential more and recreation, as as John said, it's it's that kind of private enclaves attached to residences. There's not a a whole lot of ordinances out there about this.
Is it because it's already built into the building code, and it doesn't have to be addressed separately, or they don't allow a height?
I I can't explain why, I mean, it's, you know.
Because there's plenty of rooftop restaurants in New York and things like that, but.
Yeah, and.
But not via, not over.
Yeah, well, and I mean, they're they're hotels, Birmingham has them, you know, there's, there's.
Maybe they don't allow it to violate the height.
I I don't know, I mean, they're already, you know, what, four hundred feet in there? What, you know, it's it's not about the visual from from the street level.
It seems like the only reason we need this is because we have a height limitation. I mean, that's the, that, otherwise, it's managed by the building code.
That's right.
And so maybe, do we want to, does anybody feel like tabling it to?
Yes, yes, most assuredly.
Okay, do we need to?
Yes.
Can we just recommend that?
It's almost eight o'clock. I turned into a pumpkin.
All right, directives on.
See you next month.
Thirty-three percent and setbacks from buildings edge.
And safety and wind and merit. And narrowing it so.
And that's where I think the building code can.
Like Jack's suggestion, you, this, let's let's only, like, this should apply to people who need it, so if it's the third story and above, you know.
Yeah, and I'm going down the, I mean, theoretically, somebody can come in with two twenty-foot buildings and have the same issue, twenty twenty-foot floors, but let me, if if the direction is to to limit that, I think we can accomplish that with existing definitions.
High-door stories, I guess.
Well, I would, yeah, I want to comment, I'd, first of all, I know you all ready to get out of here, but we we spent a lot of energy, it looked like in this meeting, educating the public on why we're growing outside the city limits. So this is, this is something that's pretty pressing. This is not something that Hunter put together in just a couple of weeks. Hunter, you've probably been looking at this for six months, six to eight months, maybe? It this is something that, and it does have some implications to some potential development. But I understand, also, you know, respect you if you want to table it and get more information. There was, you know, one thing that I I think that we wanted to tweak, and that was where they asked for the, I think Hunter had written in there, the ten-foot setback, and I'd ask that to be considered ten-foot setback where it's facing a public right-of-way. And because you don't necessarily want to tie somebody to building their elevator in the interior of the building, it just doesn't allow them to put an elevator shaft on the edge of the building, which may be better for everybody to begin with.
If it's a building, another building.
If it's in the back of a building, as opposed to being in the in the center of a of a building.
That makes sense.
That's one thing to consider, but. That's one thing to consider, but I do respect that, but if there was any way to, you know, you, you're, make a, this would just be a recommendation to the council and I'm asking you to, you know, think about it. I know, I know Hunter probably is being modest, but he has put months and months of effort. And, and believe it or not, I know it's a small amount of writing, but I know a lot of time went into that and a lot of, lot of meetings and conversations. Is that fair to say, Hunter? Okay. But we do respect your time.
Do we have a motion to table it? Do we need a motion or do we, I, I still.
Wait, wait, please, microphone over there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we in?
Remind us of death.
Are we in the motion zone where we need a motion? I, I, I respect the work that's gone into it, but I feel like we need a little more time to consider it. And I would move that we table it.
I agree with that.
I'll second that.
Do we need to? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? To get back to the agenda.
And if there's anybody that has any idea or wants to send comments about those, I'll try to get, drive them together pretty quick with the intent to address these three main concerns and send that out while we can't debate that in email. Internally, you can come back and forth with me and we can get to a resolution.
Wonderful. So, this is XSD 21.46, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Duberry acting on behalf of the owner FST Verandas LLC for final plat approval of the estates at the Verandas Phase One.
Good evening. As you mentioned, this is a 15-lot subdivision. It is a final plat for Phase One of the estates at the Verandas located off of Highway 104, approximately three-eighths of a mile east of Highway 181. It is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Fairhope and is unzoned Baldwin County. There is a village site plan that does govern how these lots are created and it is in compliance with that. On the screen, on your left is a zoning map, void of color because it is unzoned Baldwin County and on the right is the aerial of the property. Phase One is the northern half or northern portion of the lot there that's on 104. On the screen is the plat. It is for 15 lots. 14 of those lots are for the actual dwelling units. Lot 15 is the lot that was reserved in this first phase for future development. Phase Two and Three has received preliminary plat. Phase Two is currently under construction now. Some of the site data, as I said, it's unzoned Baldwin County. The lot sizes are three acres. You can see the setbacks listed on the screen. The utilities for water to city of Fairhope with the size of the lots, sewer service and septic, river area utilities for electric and AT&amp;T for phone service. A couple of notes and follow-up activities. The final plat must be recorded within 60 days of the date of final approval or it will expire. Again, the subdivision's been built and designed in conformance with both the approved preliminary plat and village subdivision approval. Follow-up activities, if approved, is we'll need, staff will need a copy of the recorded plat, copy of the recorded O&amp;M agreement and the maintenance and guarantee agreement, which is executed by the developer and ultimately signed by the mayor to fully execute it, will be needed. We have a few conditions, but staff recommends approval of SD 21.46, estates at the Verandas Phase One, subject to the following conditions. Add a note to the plat at the engineer's certificate of approval to the plat. Two is the landscaping buffer around the detention pond shall be installed as required by condition of approval of the preliminary plat. Three is provide verification Baldwin County Highway Department comments have been satisfied. Four is to simply complete the required follow-up activities listed in the staff report. Two items on here that were not in the actual packet that have been added afterwards was a wood railing fence was install, being installed on the property. It was actually being installed on top of the gas main inside of the future right-of-way. So, as a condition is the relocation of the wood rail fence off the gas main and onto private property. And six, this Baldwin County roads, they received approval through our village subdivision to build to a non-traditional curb and gutter road, agreed upon also with Baldwin County whose right-of-way and road it ultimately will be. With that, there's usually a W stamped in the curbing to mark with a water meter location. The applicant's been working with the water department since there is no curbing on these streets to come up with another solution to appropriately mark those. I believe they may have come up with a solution, but to have those installed water meter markers in the right-of-way using a method approved by the water department is the final condition. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff. And Mr. Trey Cordy is with us and Casey Potts with Duberry Engineers.
Would the owner or, or does anyone have any questions for staff?
No, I'm done.
Would the owner or developer like to address anything before the public hearing?
Trey Cordy with the Verandas, I'm one of the owners out there. Two items, the, the biggest one is number five. The fence is not in the right-of-way at all. On one side of the road is two and a half feet inside the property line. The other side is 10 feet inside the property line. They are, the fences do not need to be relocated. They're not in the city's right-of-way. I know that for a fact because I was out there and.
It says off gas main. Do we, I don't know.
They, they, when they were installed, so we had a, a dig, you know, what you called before you dig. It was all located and yet one of them, and one of, one of the post holes did hit a gas, hit a gas line and they, you know, it happens sometimes. But the gas main is, it was at a crossing, it was at a, you know, a feeder line. So, I had no idea where that came from. That information is totally incorrect.
Looking at the ASBills that were provided, the water meters are located on private property outside of the right-of-way.
The water meters are.
The water meters are. And this fence is on the west side of the property is located between the water meters and the edge of the road. Therefore, that would be inside the right-of-way.
No. The location of the water meters has nothing to do with where the right-of-way is.
Do the ASBills not show the water meter on private property?
Yes.
So, if the water meter's on private property and then you have an area of grass between that and the pavement, then that area would be right-of-way if the water meter is just.
No, no, no. The water, I mean, that has nothing to do with anything. The, the property corners out there are marked with iron pins with a plastic cap. So, the water me, if the water meter is set 10 feet inside the property line and my fence is on this street side of the water meter, that does not mean it's in the right-of-way. It just means it's, it's still not beyond the property.
To, to move this on, we can, we can redo that condition of approval to verify that the fence is not inside of the right-of-way and if so, removed and placed onto private property.
Yeah, I was, you know, I, there's some, yeah, because I don't want to let this another month.
That, that, that sounds reasonable.
We can now just modify that.
Substitute review.
Yeah. So, we have to open a public hearing there or do we, let's open it and close it and then if we have any questions.
And I do have one other.
Okay.
Comment on this too is the, the retention pond. The, I'm not quite sure what number two means, but the retention pond that's for, for the whole development is kind of, is, you saw it, there's, there's the 14 lots, then it kind of curves down and the retention pond's sitting way kind of down here anyway. So, we have completely, we've got a well in, it's sodded, it's irrigated, it's doing real well. But the, so it is completely, the slopes are maintained by sod, not just seed and everything. The new street for Phase Two is being built right now. It's actually paved. They're doing some touch-up work. So, we'll be back in here, I don't know, probably within a month or two for Phase Two. So, there's a, just a, I don't know, 30 feet between the new road and the edge of sod. I guess that's what they're talking about, but I can't sod that just yet because it's still being, it's still under construction. So, it is being, it is planned to be sodded once Phase Two is complete, but I don't understand why that would hold up. Basically, if y'all make it a requirement that I gotta get that sodded prior to recording of the plat, I mean, it might be another six weeks before that happens. But if you were to take a picture of it, the entire retention pond is completely sodded, all the, all the slopes are sodded. It's, it's being mowed and being maintained.
Why don't, uh.
It's hard to explain that without a picture, but.
Yeah.
What was the condition of approval of the preliminary plat?
That's where I was going.
That the landscaping buffer around the retention pond was installed, which included trees.
But the retention pond covers more than just Phase One.
So, which included more than sod? Is that where you're getting it?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, here's a technicality. So, the retention pond is in a common area.
Right.
The common area does not extend to the edge of the new road because that's considered right-of-way. I'm getting the technicalities here. We, we sod it up to the edge of the, the common area.
It sounds like he's talking not just about the sod though. It said landscape buffer, which included trees, I think.
Yeah, the street trees, but that's in Phase Two, inside the road right-of-way.
So, if there's a.
So, my, my com, my common area is sodded around the retention pond, the common area is sodded up to the property lines of the common area.
So, how do we define?
The part that has not been sodded is the right-of-way.
That, that makes sense, but I think let's, let's get clear on what the landscape buffer was.
And in your, in your package, you had the approved landscape plan that was submitted with the preliminary plat as well. It was submitted back to the city for this case December 10th, or it was submitted December 10th, 2020 that we went with the preliminary plat. That showed there were 12-foot tall red oaks spaced out 100 feet with a fountain with lights in the center, irises around an inlet structure and a three-rail fence was the landscape plan that was submitted. That was the preliminary approval, condition of approval that this was installed prior to final plat.
Okay, so that's not, that's not the road construction.
And the final plat approval is condition of going to be installed, not just grass. All right, can't argue that, but whatever. I mean, that was going to be done once Phase, the Phase Two, which is under construction, is done. Do what I can to get that.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the public like to speak to this? Close the public hearing? Does anyone have any further discussion or questions or do we have a motion?
I move we approve SD 21.46, estates at the Verandas subdivision final plat, subject to staff recommendations and review of number five of the, of the staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What?
One other discussion on this. Five and six, especially five, it needs to be approved by the gas department. That needs to be condition of approval as we do this because that gas line is my understanding two is under the fence. And number six, I'm not sure we've reached a resolution, but we need to make sure that resolution is reached before we, for the water meters. Okay?
And do you want to just, just point out that there's 60 days to get a plat approved? But that great point, that number five, just to catch all there to the satisfaction of the gas superintendent.
Do we? Can we, we've amended then?
John will need to amend that motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Have we already approved it subject?
We, well, we had seconded it.
You had a motion that was seconded, so.
Do we need a new motion?
The person that made the motion needs to amend his motion or withdraw his motion.
I'll make the, a new motion, just amend my motion, which.
You can amend it.
I amend my motion for approval to, for that number five under review, it has to be at the, be approved by the, by the public utilities, federal public utilities.
Gas superintendent. Second. Now I can vote for it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing to consider the request of the applicant SE Civil acting on behalf of the owner of FST Blue Island 2021 for final plat approval of Hermitage Court re-subdivision, an eight-lot subdivision.
So, this is also a final plat of, off of Blue Island, 68 Ventures Caterer LLC. SE Civil is the engineer of record for the project. It is an eight-lot subdivision. It's currently zoned a PUD, which also has a site plan that corresponds with it. The preliminary plat approval was November 2020. Top of your screen is the, left side is the zoning image, has not quite been updated when this was captured to reflect the blue PUD color. On the right is the aerial overview. On the screen is a copy of the preliminary plat as built. Current data, zoning is a PUD. The minimum lot size is 14,000 square feet. Front and rear setbacks, 35 feet with a side of 10. Public utilities, water, sewer and electric are all Fairhope, but phone service is AT&amp;T. Again, the same comments with the recording of the final plat within 60 days. The subdivision has been built and designed in conformance with both the approved preliminary plat and PUD site plan. Follow-up activities, providing a copy of the recorded plat, O&amp;M agreement and that the maintenance and guarantee agreement executed by the developer, then mayor signs as to fully execute it. Staff recommends approval of SD 21.50, Hermitage Court, following, to, subject to the following conditions. One is a minor, a minor amendment to the plat is to add the PUD ordinance number to the site data table and then to complete the required follow-up activities listed in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions and we have Mr. David Dill, I think is still with us.
No, he's asleep back there.
With us tonight to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
And we did get the O&amp;M agreement today, I believe. So, that's one of the follow-up activities. Already signed, already recorded? Not reported, but we did receive the plat.
David, do you have anything to, all right. Any questions for David or the, open the public hearing? Would anyone in the public like to speak to? There's nobody in the public left. Close the public hearing.
Did you close the public hearing?
I closed it.
Motion is chairwoman, lady, person.
It's not that hard.
Boss.
Case number SD 2150, Hermitage Court re-subdivision final plat. I move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then last, we have the SD 2152, public hearing to consider the request of the city of Fairhope planning and zoning department to accept Resolution 2021-04 for a proposed amendment to the city of Fairhope subdivision regulations to include suggested certificates for subdivision plats.
So, I'll be real quick with this. It's exactly as it says. We're going to add an appendix to the back of the subdivision regulations with suggested certificate blocks. Oftentimes, utilities, planning director, planning commission, whatever is a little bit different depending on where you go. So, to kind of give us some stability and things going on with ours, we wanted to go ahead and have something to reference to, to point developers, engineers, surveyors that are making these plats and creating them, putting these labels on so we can remain consistent through what is going on there. I have them listed all through here. There's the surveyor, the owner, county engineer, a flood statement, there's a random, or a wetland notice, not a signature block, but just a note, at our airport overlay district zone for properties that are in that to let them know that there is going to be some noise attenuation things that may affect how that development is done. Certificate of approval for the different utilities, the planning commission certificate, approval for the planning director, a license, the certificate for the engineer that is applied out of our subdivision regulations and a certificate block provided by E911 to add to our final plats that come through.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Under certificate of approval for planning commission, is that alley that's the secretary that would sign that?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I got.
If there's any other.
That's just for us, our approval?
It says public hearing.
We do, we do a resolution.
It's a resolution. It's a resolution, so there will be a public hearing. If any, anybody has any suggestions on, on our certificate blocks.
Yeah. So, so you want a motion for us to approve?
Correct.
So move.
Do I have to open and close the public hearing?
I'm sorry?
I have to open and close the public, we can open the public hearing and close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so do we officially, do we adjourn, or do we just move to executive session?
Yes, so briefly, Madam Chairwoman, pursuant to Alabama Code, Section 3625A7, as the planning commission attorney, I recommend that the planning commission go to executive session to discuss potential impending litigation. I would suggest our conversation can take maybe fifteen minutes. I do not anticipate any further action being needed to be taken after we return from executive session. If there's any discussions about actions to be taken, I'll recommend to the commission to come back and take formal action. The meeting doesn't need to be closed, but I think staff can go home because we'll be fifteen minutes, come back, and at your discretion, motion to adjourn, and we can leave. So if y'all will make a motion, we can vote on that, we can go back to executive session.
What, do we, do we leave here and just turn the television off, or what do we do?
No, we'll go back to the mayor's conference.
So we need a motion to go to the mayor's conference, too?
So move.
Second? All, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Smooth to adjourn.
Forty-nine.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Eight forty-nine.